Madam Clerk, you on?
I'm ready. I'm here.
You sure are. Alright.
Just make sure everybody's muted if they're not talking.
Well, you know, that's your job.
No. We had a week off, so we may be rusty.
This is true. This is true. Okay, I'm trying to-
Looks like we have everyone here.
Looks like everybody's here. Alright then. I'm just trying to pull up the agenda real quick.
The email was from Rachel on Friday. And I've attached it, um, I've started attaching the agenda to actually the WebEx invite everyone to. So it's on there as well. Think your phone's going in and out, President?
Yep.
You ready? Did you say roll call? I couldn't hear you. Are you there?
I think he dropped.
He's here on the call. I see him, but it sounds like he can't hear me. President Cruz, are you there?
I think his phone is in and out.
Yeah, I see the little thing on there.
We always appreciate our clerk. She does so much for us.
You're back. Okay, he couldn't hear you. He couldn't hear you. You ready, President? It's like he's going in and out. Can you guys, am I not hearing him? Are you hearing him or?
Nope, I don't hear him.
No, we don't hear him.
Did you hear what he just said?
No.
Yes, I heard what he just said.
Yeah, and it's like he went out.
There he is.
I got, I was, somebody muted me. Alright, so I'm back on.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
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 Yes, but you're not as loud as everyone else.
That's interesting. I'm gonna try this, I'm on my computer, but if I had to go to my phone, I will switch off if you guys can't hear me better.
We can hear you good. Yeah, we can hear you good.
We can hear you good.
Okay, great. So let's call this meeting to order, guys. Good evening, everyone. This is Lloyd Cruz, Southfield City Council President. Calling the order to the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council. And study session this evening, I believe. We have both, because we did have to postpone last week. But now we do have, we have clear direction and it looks like we will continue to stay remotely until the end of the year. We've got the governor's clearance to do such, and so we will stay with that at this point. So again, we call the meeting to order this evening of October 13th, 2020, meeting via WebX. Again, like I said, we will have our regular meeting that we have postponed from last week, as well as our study session for this evening. So Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Banks?
President?
Brightwell?
Here.
Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
President.
Morris?
President.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
President.
Mr. President, you do have a quorum, and just for point of clarification, because we have some items postponed, we're doing a hybrid meeting, which, once we get to the item of the agenda items for discussion and our actions. On here, the request for immediate need to act is on here, but since we have a hybrid meeting, you do not have to do a rule ten to act on those items.
Alright, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
So we'll start off with the, of course, with our pledge of allegiance, and I will lead that today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one appointment that I believe is the mayor's appointment. Mayor Cyberg?
Good evening, council. Yes, we do have an appointment to the South Public Library Board. I'm asking for your approval to appoint Joyce Johnson to the library board. You should have received her application. I can tell you, first of all, that we have a vacancy on the board. One of our members' family is relocating to Lansing, and she's resigned. That's Terry Selman, who served for a number of years. And so I'm asking to fill that vacancy with Joyce Johnson. Ms. Johnson has lived in the community for quite some time. She was an English teacher in the South Public Schools. I had the occasion to visit her classroom on a number of occasions. She's a superb teacher, currently retired. And has agreed to fill the vacancy on the library board. So this evening, I asked for a motion to approve her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cyberg. Council, do we get a motion?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that Joyce Johnson be appointed to the Southfield Library Board with her term of office effective through October 13th, 2023.
Support.
So it's been moved by Ms. Banks and supported by Ms. Taylor that we approve the appointment made by the mayor for Ms. Joyce Johnson to the Southfield Library Board. Are there any questions or concerns before we take a vote? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Appointment of Joyce Johnson confirmed. And Mr. President, just for public consumption, we will be swearing her in at a later date. To get her actual appointment, we swear her into that. And at the beginning of the meeting, you said October 13th meeting. It's actually the October 19th meeting. It was an error on the top of the table, so just for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, Council President?
Yes.
I believe Ms. Johnson might be on the line if she wanted to comment.
Sure. Ms. Johnson, if you're on the line, please let us know. We'd love to hear from you.
Hello, council. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Great.
Great. Well, I'm feeling great over here. Thank you for appointing.
You're very welcome, and we're very glad to have you, and we appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity.
Thank you so very much.
Unfortunately, we have to do all this remotely right now, because normally we would be able to meet you and give our congratulations personally, but just know that we definitely appreciate you stepping up to the plate and serving on the board for us and filling this void that we have at this time. So congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored.
Alright, very well.
Thank you, council.
Alright, now, thank you. Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through F.
Support.
As we moved by Ms. Morris and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve items A through F from the postponed meeting last week. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Again, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Assigned agenda items A through F have been approved.
Thank you very much. Alright, so now we have two public hearings this evening.
Yes. This is Rochelle Freeman. Good evening, Mr. President and honorable board. The city of Southfield received a request from International Automotive Components Group of North America, otherwise known as IAC, to seek an exemption of their personal property taxes for five years. On the line, we have representatives from the company and the real estate company that has assisted them. Chris Burnick from IAC and Adam Burgess from Plant Moran will give a short presentation. After their presentation, we'll look for city council to open a public hearing to establish an industrial development district under PA 198 of 1974, as amended, at 27777 Franklin Road. So at this time, I'd like to move, I'd like to ask Chris and Adam to start their short presentation. Again, this presentation was given at the September 21st committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Chris, Adam, you have the floor. Can you please give us your names and addresses for the record?
Yes.
Right here.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Christopher Burnick. I'm the Tax Director at International Automotive Components in Southfield, Michigan.
Yeah.
Adam, you're on mute.
I'm Adam Burgess. I'm a senior vice president with Plant Moran Cressa in Southfield.
Can, can you please pull up the presentation window?
Okay. Is this the presentation? Yes.
Thank you.
Next slide. So a little overview of IAC. So we're a global tier one automotive company located in Southfield, Michigan. We've been located, our current location in Southfield, since 2011. We're global, we have a global footprint of more than 70 locations in 17 countries. As you can see, we have 18,000 employees with about $3.7 billion in sales. We basically make interior, all interiors, any interior component of your car, the headliner, the dash, the IP, the console, everything but you're pretty much just the seats of your car. We're recognized as one of the top little interior automotive companies in the country, and our global headquarters is in Luxembourg. Our North American headquarters is, is what's going to be located in this, in this new location. Next slide. So this is a little overview of what we, what we, what we currently offer to the OEMs for Chrysler, GM. We make the instrument panels, the cockpit assemblies, the door panels, the overhead systems, sunroof, snow sunroof, whatever. And then the bumper systems, we make some exterior parts, some molded plastic parts, sun visors, grills, and fascias. Next slide. Basically, this is an overview of our locations in North America, including Mexico, and so we have about $1.8 billion in sales, or the $3.7 billion in sales. We have 22 manufacturing facilities in North America, three engineering centers, tech centers, and 11,000 employees with ISAC regional headquarters located in Southfield, Michigan. Next slide. So this is the manufacturing footprint that we have. Global, as we see, the north 21, 21 facility, 21 facilities in North America, and those are the locations in North America. Alabama, Texas, Indiana, mostly in the northeast, Midwest, as you say. And then we have facilities in Ontario and Mexico, as you can see. And Europe, you can see, we're throughout Eastern and Western Europe, and then we have some facilities in Asia. Shanghai is our, our North, our Asia, rest of the world, our Asia headquarters. I think Europe's headquarters are located in Dusseldorf, Germany. And you can see the representative sales and size of employees on this slide. Next slide. So I wanted to get an overview of the board and general public of what's changed. So from the last time we see, we seeked a, basically abatements from the, from the Southfield municipality. So we continue to be held by a private equity firm. We were originally set up to be, we were originally set up to be a global interiors of everything in your car. But basically realized that there wasn't as much new trees between the hard trim and soft trim components, and soft trim is like the carpeting and trunk thing, trunk liners that you see in every car. So we basically determined that there wasn't as much symmetry as there, as there should be. So we decided to basically sell off our soft trim business to the company, the company called Oria Solutions, which is still located in Southfield. So we still own 30% of that investment, but that's, we basically sold that off, and we stuck primarily today with our core business, which is the doors, IP, everything that I showed you, our headliners. Next slide. So basically, this is a little overview of the fact that with our joint venture that I discussed, where the soft, soft trim and the carpet and carpet business went to the, to Oria. Basically, so we sold off, on November 15, 2007, we sold off 27 manufacturing facilities and five administrative tech centers. Basically, to Oria Solutions, which I stated is located in Southfield. And then basically, we retained 30% ownership, as I said. We took those proceeds and paid off some of our debt and, and, and put in money into the business to be, to increase, to improve our capital. Which is very important, our business to be capital intensive, we're capital intensive industry, but we wanted to be, we need to replace a lot of our robots and different things in our facility. So a lot of the money went to paying down debt and, and rehabbing some of our manufacturing equipment. Presently, IAC, like as it says, we continue to focus on our, our hard trim business, enable us to be, like, long-term, we feel like that's the word, profitable section of our businesses. And strategically, we are basically trying to get more in line with our, what the OEMs want us to do when they're, and that's, they believe our strongest point is in our, is in the, in the hard trim business. We basically expect to basically manufacture about 250 different programs globally, and approximately 100 in North America and 150 other programs throughout, throughout the world. Next slide. Adam?
On this slide, on this slide, you'll find a quick snapshot of IAC's current footprint. IAC occupies two facilities on Telegraph totaling approximately 123,000 square feet. It is important to note that both sites are currently being offered on the marketplace to lease, and the sites have been shown to other companies looking to attract a new site in Southfield. As IAC really looked into, looking to identify its new regional headquarters, it was of the utmost importance that it was in proximity to the existing site to retain some of the key workforce, while also addressing a smaller footprint to help reduce some of the fixed costs. Next slide. The new site is located in the American Center, approximately 32,000 square feet, with a planned move-in date of April 1, 2021. American Center is owned by Redico. This facility and location will have a reimagined vision for kind of IAC's office space. Ultimately, it is believed that it will allow for 165 full-time employees to retain, be retained in the city of Southfield, with approximately 80 relocating from its current headquarters to Troy. We believe that there will be approximately $2.1 million spent in space improvement, technology, and new furniture. And with the proposed abatement, IAC would recognize a savings of approximately $230,000 over the five-year period. Next slide. You'll see just a quick floor plan for the proposed space. There's still some edits and things going on to the space, but this is a rough, a rough idea when things will be finished. Next slide.
Kick it back to press. Yep. Thank you, Adam. So we really do appreciate your time, and, and we really do appreciate the council's support of IAC over, over the, since 2011 and, and currently with this initiative. We are really excited to be, we've, we've, we admittedly have slipped a little bit in our community involvement, but we plan on, on, with the new leadership. I've talked to many of the people in, in leadership, and we are trying to find new ways to get more involved with our community and, and do some of the stuff with Southfield, and take advantage and get back to the community. We, we've been lacked. That's not our, that, that's something that we are kind of trying to get back to the IAC way. And basically, like I said, we anticipate that the city of Southfield will remain our headquarters for a very long time. It's worked out well since 2011, and we anticipate a long-term relationship with the, the city, and we hope that everything can continue to go forward for longer than the five-year period that we have currently asked for abatements. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher and Adam. Mr. President, we would request that city council open the public hearing to establish the industrial development district for 27777 Franklin Road.
Alright, thank you, Chris and Adam and Shelley. And yes, so we will now open the public hearing. As a public hearing, anyone, any resident or others that wish to speak to this particular matter may call in at this time, and you will have three minutes to comment on this, on this particular issue. So we will allow time for individuals to call in. And Clerk Hawkins will let us know when, when we're ready.
What I will do, I will unmute everyone under our attendee list to see if anyone wants to speak on this public hearing. So I'll do that right now.
Alright, thank you.
And if you're unmuted and don't want to speak, you can mute yourself back, but I just unmuted all of our attendees in case they didn't know how to press the, wasn't aware of the star three feature.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Mr. Mullin?
Hello?
Yes. Yes?
I'd like to speak.
We, we hear you.
Okay. My name's Gerard Mullin, post office box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I am not against this initiative, but I am against this procedure. How can you postpone this? From the meeting of 10:13:20, when the meeting never took place? I would like to remind council that the first ordinance ever passed on April 28th, 1958, was that we operate under Roberts rules. Under Roberts rules, if you did have a meeting, you would have to pass, you would have to either postpone the meeting to a time certain or postpone it indefinitely. And either, in this case, you were unable to postpone anything, and so you would have to re-advertise the meeting, and you'd have to give at least a 15-day notice. And that's all I say. The procedure is wrong. I understand we're operating under difficult times, but there is no excuse. You cannot blame the virus on this, as far as I know, unless you know something that I, I don't know. This is just a procedural error, and it should, this should not take place. You should have to re-advertise this initiative and, and then hence hold a proper to know what happened. In fact, you didn't even put up the fact that the meeting was postponed last week on the, on the cable. You should have put up at least a billboard slide, and you never did. There was no way that anyone would know this. If you had some way, even if that would be, would almost serve, you could almost get away with, with it, if, if that could serve as a postponement, but the meeting never took place. So under Roberts rules, this is a, to me, it's null and void. You cannot hold a public hearing for this initiative, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Are we still at the public hearing?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm sure that you heard my husband loud and clear. There's something wrong with this process. Now, all of you on city council have talked about transparency, not just at the dais or, or at the council table in the council auditorium, but you talked about it in your candidacy. How are we having this public hearing today? Did you re, this council meeting? This public hearing? And my ultimate question to the is, what was the reason that you canceled this? And I would like for you, in your response, to state the reason. Now, you might dismiss me to try to look good in front of the petitioner. That's fine, but remember, all of you will have to run a reelection. The people deserve an answer. Why was it canceled, and why are you doing this today, when you know it's not right? And I'd like to ask how much time I have, because I keep hearing these bells go off, so I don't know if I'm talking over my time. But can you tell me how much time I have, if I have any time, since you keep ringing these bells to annoy my speaking every couple of seconds?
You got a minute and a half.
Okay, so I have a lot of time. So why are you doing this? Is this so important that we could not have waited? And we could not have done this the proper way by re-advertising it? Why would council not state the reason why you canceled it in the first place? Now, I don't know if you guys are getting so comfortable and complacent being at home and doing this via Zoom or telephone conferencing, but you're getting really sloppy. And this is the time for you to be at the top of your game, because you don't have to drive to City Hall right now. You don't have to park. You don't have to walk in. And I don't know if, if all of you are working your jobs, which you certainly have more time to read the packet, or to read the email with the information, however you get your council information. But you need to tell us something, and you need to say something to the people that are listening to you. And if you don't, then I don't want to hear any of you talk about transparency. I don't want to see it on any of your literature when you run for reelection, because you would be an outright fabricator. And ring the bell once when I'm speaking, and stop trying to interrupt me. It's very rude.
Is that the time, Madam Clerk?
That's the time, sir.
Beep. If they can't do it right.
Yeah, I think that's, that was it. Okay, thank you, Ms. Gerald.
Mr. President, I'll open up the lines again and see if anyone else wants to speak.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I don't know. This is Jerome Rush. I live in the Twickenham subdivision, and I don't know if the public hearing portion of the meeting today, if it's only regarding what's on the agenda, or is the general public- if it's only regarding what's on the agenda or is the general public common opportunity?
We will, we will have general public comments at the end of the meeting. This right now is just for this particular matter.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we do not have any others for the public hearing.
Okay. The public, the public hearing is now closed. I do want, I do want the public to know that the postponement of the meeting was scheduled. It was notified, it was placed on every outlet we possibly could and it was done in the manner in which it should have been under the rules of Roberts rule. And we have to understand, we have, we were taking, we're taking our direction from the state of Michigan because they are giving us direction on how we are to handle these remote meetings at this point in time. And that was a very, the last meeting was very critical in the sense that we really didn't have a signed executive order. The president was taking action on us, in all states for that matter, on terms of how to do certain things each governor was doing there, making their own, trying to make their own decisions that was in the best interest of their state. And we as a city take our direction from Governor Whitmer. But everything was done in proper order, so that was not an issue. So, I will now, since the hearing is now closed, I will go to council and I'll start with Councilwoman Banks for any comments or statements you'd like to make. Ms. Banks?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Council President, for the comments regarding the public hearing. But can we also hear from the city attorney? I just want to be double confirmed, you know, I don't want to approve this and then have a problem coming back. Have we done everything in proper procedure?
Mrs. Dawkins, City Attorney, yes, that is correct. When we did the postponement, it was due to the Open Meetings Act being amended. The Senate had passed it, went to the, excuse me, the House. There were some substitutions made the entire time that this was taking place. Of course, this was due to the governor's orders being invalidated from the Supreme Court. So, then we waited for the governor's signature and during that time, the Michigan Municipal League worked on behalf of all the cities in the state. And I forgot which night it was that we did receive notice that she had signed the bill. So, therefore, the meetings that we held going all the way back when she put out her personal orders are validated up until the end of the year. We are able to have the remote meetings and then beginning in January 21, there'll be some changes that will be facing the council further. So, at this point, we've done everything as other cities did last week as we were waiting for that new legislation to be signed. So, the order and everything, we were not the only city that had postponed our meeting because had we had a meeting and the Open Meetings Act as amended had not been signed, then any decisions we made at October 13 meeting could have been invalidated until we knew the legislation had been passed, which it was, and been signed by the governor. So, now we are all in good standing and in compliance with the Open Meetings Act going all the way back to whenever we started first having these remote meetings.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney King. I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Banks. Mr. Brightwell?
I have no questions, I'm in support of this and I like IAC and I'm glad that they like Southfield.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hoskins?
No questions for me, I'm just happy that IAC is continuing to stay in the city.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mandabon?
Thank you, I have no comments and like it was said earlier, I'm happy that they're staying in the city as well.
All right, thank you. Councilpro Tim Morris?
Thank you, no comments for me, just thankful that IAC is continuing their partnership with our city. Looking forward to doing great things in the future.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, no, no questions, everything has already been asked and answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else from anybody else on the, on the call that would like to speak or comment on this before we, before we close? All right, very good. So, I think we're moving forward there.
Mr. President? So, again, at this time, we'd be looking for action to approve the request to establish the Industrial Development District. And then after you do that, we would look for you to open another public hearing to approve their request, their application and then run that item.
Is that item B?
So, the first thing is we're seeking approval of the actual resolution to establish the Industrial Development District.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mandabon?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request from Medico to establish an Industrial Development District under PA Act 198 of 74 as amended at 2777 Franklin Road.
Support. This is Councilwoman Taylor.
All right, Ms. Taylor, all right, so we've been, it's been moved by Mr. Mandabon, supported by Ms. Taylor, that council approved the establishment of an Industrial Development District under Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended at 2777 Franklin Road. Have a clerk please call and roll.
Mandabon?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Approval for the IDD?
Mr. President, at this time, we would request that you open a public hearing to discuss the application of International Automotive Group North America to submit their request for the PA 228, PA 328.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone that wishes to speak on this particular matter of the application for International Automotive Group North America for personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328, 1998 as amended for, again, the property at 2777 Franklin Road. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak to this particular matter, you'll have three moments, three minutes to speak to it. We have everyone unmuted at this point?
Yes.
I can't hear.
All right, hearing now, the public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to speak?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Mullin.
Okay, Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Now, I am not against this initiative because it's for a tax abatement for personal property. But again, I'm against the procedure. And think of this, how was anyone to know about this meeting? That this, this public hearing would occur on this date? You left no information, even last week, you didn't even put it on the website. Or I'm sorry, on the, I didn't see it on the website, I didn't see it on cable. I looked for something to say the meeting's postponed, never was. You know, even that would be more acceptable. But you have, no one, nobody in Southfield knows that this, this event is taking place at this time. How would you know? How would you know? You don't even put this on the legal notice bulletin board. Now, it may be there because I, I don't go to City Hall every day. But as far as I know, you have not been putting up public hearings on the, the legal notice bulletin board. And I'm not going to go into it, but there's a procedure for this in, I don't know if you advertise in a newspaper or not. And there's a procedure if there is no newspaper. And I don't think you went through that, but that's for a different day. But what I'm saying here, as far as I know, there has never been a legal notice for this meeting held today. And you never went through, you never held a meeting to, in order to postpone to a time certain, which is what you want to do, that way people would know when to come to the meeting. How does anyone other than somebody who is a real council watcher like my wife and myself would even have a clue that there would be a meeting on this public hearing? And like I said, I'm not against tax abatements for personal property. But I am against the procedure. And to me, there is no, unless I'm missing something, there is, for this, there's no external circumstances that happen. You can talk about the governor and all that. I still don't understand why you didn't put up any kind of notice, period. At least you could have put it up on cable. That's all I can say. I'm just kind of disappointed that you people are just willing to violate the rules, you know? And there is a procedure under Roberts rules and Roberts rules doesn't cover where you have no meeting. And I don't know how you kind of change stuff around and rearrange it and say, oh, it's okay. But, and that's about it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mullin.
Hello, one moment, please. Hello, are you there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, I concur with everything that my husband said. It's really all about the procedure. But didn't the City Council give IAC a tax abatement for their location on Telegraph? So, is that like the corporate headquarters? And if that's the corporate headquarters on Telegraph across from the mall, not too far from Verizon, what is this facility going to be at 2777? And maybe another seven Franklin Road? I'm against giving a personal property tax abatement if the company does not need it. I have said for years that the city uses these tax abatements for personal property as a marketing tool. It is supposed to go for businesses that actually need the help. And I can't see IAC needing the help because they built a state-of-the-art facility right there on Telegraph. I need this council to be more cognizant of what the procedure requires when you give a tax abatement. And I'm going to keep saying it until my last breath. It appears as if this is a marketing tool just to give Shelley something to bring to City Council. So, when you have that, and that's a problem for taxpayers in the city, and then you have the process of this council not doing its due diligence and proper procedure, you really make the city look bad. You think you look bad because people get up there and question your decision-making and your authority? No, it's when you're in an authority position and you do it, maybe breaking your own rules. You're going to have to live with the decisions that you make. I don't agree with this, I'm not in favor of this tax abatement. I think that the company doesn't need this tax abatement. And I don't think they're going to move out of the city if they don't get it because what are they asking for, less than a million dollars? And please speak clearly so we can understand you. We're getting a lot of feedback on our end and we want to hear what you have to say. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it doesn't appear that we have anyone else for a public comment at this time, sir.
Okay, great. We will then now close the public hearing at this time. I do want to be, I want to make sure that all the people that are listening do know that this information was posted on Cable 15. We want to know that the proper notices were made for the postponement of the last meeting. So, we have done everything according to the book and done everything within our power to make sure that everyone knew what had taken place on last week. And so, that's, that's number one. Number two, I don't appreciate anyone calling here attacking any of our colleagues in any kind of way. Ms. Freeman is doing her job and bringing us opportunities for the city to thrive, just like everyone else is here trying to do. Nobody's trying to sit on or cover up anything within this city. This job is a labor of love for all of us. And all we're trying to do is do the very best that we can to make this city thrive, grow, build and be the shining light in Oakland County and in the whole metro Detroit area. So, I just want to say that to all the people that may be listening right now. That's what we're here for. So, I just, I really get discouraged sometimes with folks because they act like we're over here doing something extra and something that we're doing for ourselves. No, we're doing this for the city. We put ourselves out here to try to make this city a great city. So, like I said, we followed the rules, we went by the book, everything was posted. So, if you missed it, that was on people that maybe didn't look and really try to see what was going on. And again, these are tumultuous times. These are, these are very difficult times for everybody. And like Madam Clerk said, we weren't the only city that did a postponement or cancellation of a meeting. We have to do what we have to do so that we can follow the rules and so we get, we can still get work done even when we are at times where they might not be very comfortable and it is tough right now. But we've been working through them and I think that we have been, Southfield has been a city that's been moving forward more than any other city around us at this point in time. So, I just want the people to know that are listening that that's what we're doing. We're putting our heads together every day, just trying to do the best job we can. I'm not saying we're perfect on everything, but we're doing the very best that we can working under the auspices of all the things that are taking place right now.
Mr. President? Mr. President, this is Rochelle Freeman. Thank you very much for the support and the kind words. I do want to assure the listeners that earlier in the presentation, IAC did announce that they have reduced, they did receive assistance from us in the past that lease has expired and they are looking hopefully to stay in the city of Southfield at this new location due to the changing work environment. Their space needs have been significantly reduced and they are looking for a different setup. and they are looking for a different setup so that they can perform at a highest level possible. That's why they're looking to relocate to, um, the building known as the American Center or 27777 Franklin Road. And again, uh, they are looking for a five-year, um, personal property exemption. Thank you.
And thank you as well, uh, for that clarification as well. So I hope, I hope everyone is hearing us, what, what we're saying. We're just, we're trying to put this all together to make Southfield not a good city, but a great city. Uh, I'm going to turn to council right now, and again, I'll go back to Ms. Banks and, uh, let her start. If there are any questions or that she would like, or comments she would like to make at this time.
Um, thank you, Council President. No, um, I think all my questions and comments were, um, answered at our last meeting. So, um, I welcome that this company is still staying within our city and look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Banks. Mr. Brightwell?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no comments from me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum? Mr. Mandelbaum, are you still, are you on it? Hopefully you may get disconnected. I'll go then to Ms., Ms. Morris.
Nothing further from me. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Taylor?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum, are you, are you, are you online or right now or? I'm sorry. Mr. Mandelbaum, any questions? Okay, that sounds like, I don't, I don't know what was going on there. I think we have a kind of a consistent vote forward, so. Ms. Freeman, you need a, you need another motion here?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion on the, um, International Automotive Group Property Tax Exemption under Public Act 328 of 1998.
Support. This is Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Morris, okay. So it had been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the application for IAC property, uh, personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328 of 1998, uh, for the property at 27777 Franklin Road. Madam Clerk, please go to roll.
Morris? Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, my, my computer wasn't, not letting me unmute before us.
Well, we're taking a roll call vote now.
Yeah, that's fine. I had no questions.
Okay, good. So, uh, it's been approved?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Freeman.
Thank you very much.
For your presentations this evening.
Thank you, President Lloyd. Thank you, President Cruz. I appreciate the time and I, I, IAC really does appreciate the support from the city. And, uh, I'd like to commend you guys for always supporting businesses and doing the right thing to make sure that businesses stay in Southfield and, and frequent the, uh, unlike what the person was saying, I think all these incentives, even though I work for the company, these incentives do incentivize us to stay and be, and makes the city of Southfield competitive unlike, uh, and it's, you know, potentially losing us, um, to another city. I totally support with what you're, with what, uh, Shelley did and she kept us, and this was a decision-maker for us to stay in Southfield and not move to Troy or some other facility. So I, I do, we do appreciate the support of Southfield. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. We glad, we glad you guys are staying in town and, um, you got our full support. So, uh, you know, we look forward to great things from you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
All right. You as well. Thank you, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Freeman as well, again. So we will move on now, since this is a hybrid meeting, since we had to combine our regular meeting with our now study session this evening. So we're moving to the additional items that we have for discussion or action this evening. And as, uh, Madam Clerk has already told us, we don't have to necessarily do Rule 10. So if we want to take action on anything this evening, we can, uh, just need a motion and, and a second and, uh, and a vote. So we'll start first with the proposed moratorium on small box discount stores. And I think Planner, Mr. Crowe is going to lead out on this.
Yes, thank you. Um, Derek, good evening, everyone. Um, as we are beginning our process for updating our five-year master plan, we've noticed a trend of small box discount stores opening up throughout the city. Uh, these small box discount stores can be defined as anywhere from 5,000 to 15,000 square feet. We currently have at least $16-type stores that have been identified within the city, of which there are two to three clusters of two to three or more stores, uh, merely adjacent to each other. We've done some initial research. I have, uh, Assistant Planner Sarah Malali on the, um, call as well as our city attorney, um, Ms. King. We've done some initial research and there are, um, some precedents from other communities to first put a moratorium in place to further study these and possibly create, uh, what's called a dispersal ordinance, um, creating limitations on clustering and separation of these types of uses so that they don't overtake, uh, a neighborhood. And that's our, uh, brief introduction to this item. We feel that we need some time to further study this, to look at other, other communities as well as state law and to come back to council with some recommendations, possibly treating these as a special land use with certain, uh, distancing requirements similar to what we've done with alternative financial institutions, pawn shops, medical marijuana facilities, and, uh, other similar types of uses. Um, I don't know if Ms. King has anything she'd like to add at this point, but we, uh, have this on for discussion. And depending on the census of council, we would be looking for a six-month, um, moratorium. Ms. King, do you have anything to add?
Um, thank you, Joy. Good evening, Council. Again, uh, we want to do a study. There are legal rights for property owners, of course, so that is why we want to really take our time to, uh, look at this, but also taking consider the, um, the city, uh, as far as our residents, the master plan and all those things. So, uh, we will be looking at everything and applying the law, constitution of all landowners and hopefully come back with a, uh, solid, uh, solution.
And this is Planner Crowe again. I, um, we, we are very conscious of the difficulty that local businesses are having during COVID-19. And, um, we are therefore not, um, requesting a moratorium on businesses less than 5,000 square feet, which are typically our mom and pop in local businesses. This would be small box discount stores ranging from 5,000 to 15,000 square feet. I believe our average, uh, in our initial survey is about 9,800 square feet, but they go up as far as close to, uh, 14,000 square feet.
Okay. Well, that's good. Again, this is a discussion topic for this evening. Uh, we're not making any decisions on anything, but, uh, we appreciate you bringing this forward. Uh, and again, uh, the, uh, I think it's analogous with, like you said, uh, you know, pawn shops, marijuana shops, whatever. You don't want to flood any one area with one thing. Uh, we want to diversify our city. Uh, and so I think that's really what this conversation comes down to be about, is making sure that, you know, the kind of things that we have in the city are everywhere. We have different things in different spaces. Uh, we don't need them all clustered in, uh, in one space. So a six-month, six-month moratorium sounds like a reasonable ask at this point while you all do a little bit more digging and, uh, researching on this particular matter. That's just my opinion at this point.
Yes, Ms., um, through the chair, I, I believe in, uh, our preparation. We, we talked about that, um, individually, these stores, um, are, are patronized by our residents and we have no, um, concerns about them individually. But when they start to cluster, I believe I used the term of the broken windows syndrome. And that's, that's the, um, concern that we, we want to make sure that they're not predatory in nature, uh, excluding grocery stores and other types of businesses. And, uh, our biggest concern is the clustering and concentration of them in a, in a finite area, not ruling them out, um, individually throughout our community.
Right. And we just want the developers and the builders and those, and, and all the areas to, you know, be creative, think out the box and, you know, try to bring new, uh, types of things to our community uh, that are attractive to everyone as well. So, uh, anyway, you know, we, we, you and I have already talked about this, Terry, you know, for long enough. But also, but you know, that's why we're bringing it to council today. And so, uh, I just want to get some input from everyone else, uh, in terms of just kind of how you feel about the moratorium and so forth. So I'm going to start with Mr. Brightwell on this one and, uh, see if there, hear, hear your comments or concerns.
Okay. Um, I, I don't have a problem with the, uh, intent of the, uh, proposal. And clearly, I want to see things clustered where, where it's, um, it, it's announced out as so, you know, it's destructive to the community. Uh, but Terry, how often do we get, uh, requests from these type of businesses per month? I mean, is it, is it frequent or what, what, what is the, uh, market for this?
Well, I, I think recently, uh, a third, um, small box discount store opened up, uh, at a shopping center, uh, two in one location, one across the street. We started to raise some red flags, uh, with, with the neighbors. Uh, again, we, we did some research. Um, because, uh, our B3 allows for general business, there's really no limitations or prohibitions at this time for general retail opening up in our business district. So, uh, when we looked into a little bit further, um, I don't think there's an alarm bell that needs to go off, but we're starting to see a trend. And when we researched it in other communities, um, we, we feel that, uh, it's worth a study and we would like to come back with some recommendations after a deep dive into, uh, a fair and reasonable limitations on these facilities.
Okay. Can, can you give me the name of one or two communities that have taken this, this route?
Uh, yes. Um, I was just, uh, reading, um, there's larger communities, um, like Cleveland, Kansas City, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Mesquite, Texas, um, I believe Birmingham. So there, there are a number of communities throughout the country that have been dealing with this as well. Um, this is, we're not in a situation where we have large food deserts that you find in large urban communities. But again, it's the, um, it's the propensity of these in smaller areas that start to give that broken window, um, syndrome. And we want to make sure that, um, these are, uh, there's fair and free market um, to allow them to thrive with, um, larger grocery stores. And without putting a pause on development of this type, um, we just don't know. I mean, it just superficially, there's a couple of clusters we're a little concerned about, but we can't really tell if there's a trend yet.
Okay. No, I, I don't have a problem with it and I appreciate you, uh, and Don being proactive with respect to seeing this coming down the road. Uh, but as far as flushing it out, I would like, uh, we will flush this out in more detail from a standpoint of, um, uh, our protection from a legal standpoint. But just, just cutting down all kind of noise that can, you know, blow back on the city. But I'm, uh, I appreciate it. I'm glad you guys are being proactive. Okay, that's, that's the chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. And again, just with this being a moratorium, it's not like we're, we're putting a halt to everything right away. We're just, we just want to look at it some more, right? You know, we're just trying to see, uh, you know, because we're just trying to just create a city that's going to be diverse, business-wise, people, everything, you know? So I think that's, that's just where we're trying to get to. So that was good. Uh, Mr. Hoskins, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, uh, first, I want to say, um, I, I want to echo what Councilman Brightwell said. I'm, thanks for being proactive with this. Um, and looking, I know we've been getting, um, some, some, uh, messages from concerned residents about, uh, the, the clustering of certain businesses. Um, so I'm glad that we are taking a look at this. And I, I think you might have said it, um, but there, Terry, there isn't like, um, you're like, stores like this aren't like beating down our door to get in. We're not like, it's not like a constant, like, uh, uh, of these stores trying to come into Southfield, is it?
Well, we, we, uh, you know, it was, uh, we did a quick review and there's 16, um, similar type of stores that have dollar in their name. And that's not us, um, broadening our net, uh, review of other type of businesses that might fall into this category. I think it was, um, two areas in, in the city that started to have a tipping point that, um, we just want to say, let's, let's, let's look at this a lot closer. And, um, as, as you have pointed out, we work very closely with the city attorney on the legality of this. But I think if we come up with reasonable and fair restrictions, uh, under like a special land use, we'll be on more solid ground. At the same time, we want to be proactive, working with our local landlords, uh, and developers and try to provide fair and equitable development throughout the city. And these are the types of trends and issues that we look at every time. We, we always are keeping a, a pulse on these items, but when we update the master plan, we start, uh, looking at, uh, existing land use patterns. We, my team has been out there driving up and down every street. You start to see trends and we want to make sure that where our trends are going in the positive direction and not in a negative direction.
All right, good. And, and thanks again for, um, looking into this. I, I'm, I'm, I know I'd be curious to, to see what we're going to come up with, uh, as you dig into the, dig into this further. So thank you for that. And that's it. That's all the questions I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I, I think, as you mentioned, it's a good idea to, to have diversity in our stores, not only in our, uh, residents, but in our businesses as well. My only question is, Terry, you mentioned that there's people who have or companies that have already, I think it's 16 companies that are currently, I guess, going through the, the motions with adding these stores to, to the city?
Well, there's 16 that are currently open.
Oh, okay.
And there, and as long as they meet the, um, zoning district, there's really no, you know, there's no site plan review unless they're building brand new. Many, many of these are taking over existing shopping centers or former big box or mid-sized box stores.
So do we, do we have anyone who, who are currently is, is building or applying for these that this would put a halt into that?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but as I said, um, the one that, uh, kind of raised everybody's eyebrows was the third within a close proximity of, of each other. And I don't want to single out any particular store. But they had a right to, to go into that space. They were backfilling some vacant space. It was zoned business. They are a retail operation. And so there was no further review by the city. And lo and behold, uh, you find out there's three stores in the same location, you know, across the street from each other. And there's another cluster on Eight Mile. And so, um, looking deeper into this, just across the And there's another cluster on Eight Mile, and so um looking deeper into this, just across the country. Uh there there are some negative trends with these type of businesses clustering each other. We don't know if that's true here. And we certainly want to, you know, again, be proactive and in a positive way as as opposed to a negative reactionary. When it goes too far.
Right, okay. Um, all right, that's all the questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manderbaum. Uh Ms. Taylor, I mean, Mr. I'm sorry, let's do Ms. Morris, I'm sorry. Then we'll go to Ms. Taylor.
Oh, okay, um thank you, Council President. Um Terry, you mentioned that there were about two to three clusters throughout the city. I know we have the one. There on um Loser and Eleven Mile. Can you identify where the others are?
Well, the uh the other one is on Eight Mile, um between Evergreen and Lawson. And then the uh remaining, let's say, eleven are are dispersed throughout the city, but some don't. Some don't meet um typical uh separation of a thousand feet or a mile where other communities have put. Um these types of, you know, uh dispersal requirements on. So I guess we have two clusters where they're immediately adjacent to each other, and then we have eleven other stores. They're not. On top of each other, but they may be, they might fall within a thousand-foot separation or so forth.
Okay.
And and um I guess uh I think there's a uh another cluster on Telegraph. Uh and Ten Mile near there, but uh again, we we haven't really spent a lot of time. Of vetting this, other than a very superficial review that, hey, I I would have, if you had uh asked me how many stores there were. Prior to us even looking at this, I never would have guessed sixteen, and there may be even more. Um so that's why we would like a pause to study this further.
So with the moratorium, um if the business is. Greater than five thousand square feet, they are not held to the moratorium?
No, it would be businesses from five thousand square feet up to fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay.
So we were trying to um not put a moratorium on small mom and pop type businesses.
Okay, so so less than five thousand square feet would not be um.
Moratorium, and they also have to meet a certain definition, so a restaurant would not be considered a small box retail discount store. So we're again, we were trying to be very careful not to uh prohibit. Business growth and development in the city, but narrowly looking at this range and based on what we found. Our the existing sixteen stores do range from just over five thousand square feet to close to fourteen thousand square feet. And our average size is ninety-eight hundred square feet.
And I'm sorry, you had mentioned uh in your summary, other um cities.
Yes.
Uh were any of those in Michigan? I I can't recall all.
Well, I I'm just, I was just quoting from one of several articles that um. That we've been researching nationwide. I don't recall anything in Michigan. And that's why um city attorney and myself had said, we don't know if other state laws, you know, encourage your um. Communities to do this or or uh support communities to do this. That's why we need some time to look at the legality of it as well.
Okay, all righty, uh no further questions for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh President Brokeham. Uh Ms. Taylor?
Uh yes, thank you. I I agree with everything that has been said already and I I do believe we should have business diversity. I just would like to ask with your study if you would also give us like a um description of what you would be including. As a discount store, um you know, what kinds of things, uh what kinds of retail stores or what have you? That would encompass that small box discount store.
Yes, uh through the chair. Yes, we um that is part of, based on the consensus of this discussion. We will uh define the definition before we come back to council to ask for the actual moratorium to be put in place. This was an initial initial meeting to see if there was support to move in this direction. And Ms. King and my myself and my team will further define that before we come back to you.
Okay.
Sometime soon, but not not tonight. We're not asking for a moratorium.
Okay, no, and I and I and I understand and I agree with that. And my other question is, I we're looking at small box discount stores, but will we be looking at clusters of any other kinds of businesses, say uh. Uh pawn shops or uh hair salons or banks or anything like that? Or do we have something currently in place for those types of businesses?
We we currently um we currently have regulations on the store three um for. Alternative financial institutions, so that's pawn shops or or loan, three-day loan stores. We do have other regulations for medical marijuana and so forth. Um we have not looked at, let's say, hair salons and nail salons, and that maybe so as we're doing our research. We might come across those those issues, um but um we uh. We do uh have some control over salons because of parking. Um parking regulations and the number of parking spaces required per chair usually limits where a lot of these. Uh can be located because there's a higher parking count because of the turnover at salons. So in 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 that case, there is some self-regulation happening. We will look at that. We will look at that as well.
Okay, and are we also looking at like how close we want one store to be, like how many square feet? Like we did with the the marijuana and all of that, so many five hundred feet or a thousand feet away from the other type of business. To also spread out the and make it more diversified.
Right, yes, so what, again, my initial research has found somewhere between a thousand. Feet separation up to a mile, so we have to, we got to find what what's what's a good fit for us. But yes, we do have, I know we've used fifteen hundred linear feet in in many cases and we. We need, we always need to be consistent with what we've done with the other types, similar types of businesses, so I would imagine. Will fall within that range as well.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask, will we make sure that it's similar to what we already have? And given all the things that we're asking you to look into, and again, I do appreciate you and and uh our attorney being proactive. Do you feel like six months is going to give you enough time? Do we have, given the COVID uh climate? Do we have enough personnel to really do a deep dive that we're gonna be doing? Will six months cover that? Will that give you enough time?
I I I believe I believe it will. We can always come back and ask for an extension. Uh I I had originally um proposed uh ninety days um and that same argument was said, hey, Terry. Maybe you need some more time, and I agreed that six months is reasonable. Started some initial research on it. Uh we got a heavy caseload coming up next year. With the master plan and the capital improvement program and so forth, so this is probably a good window for us to do the deep dive on. And we also are, I just finally, we're very conscious that we don't want to stifle business development. Especially just coming out of the the pandemic, so we're trying to balance fairness with everybody and we'll get it done. And at worst case, we can always come and ask for a ninety-day extension if needed.
And and how will we be advertising this to the developers or the potential business owners that want to come into the city? To let them know that this is just a postponement or a temporary mor- moratorium. Uh we don't have any applications today, but maybe say next month or whatever. How would we? Or how are we planning to put that kind of information out there?
Well, we we'll work closely with uh Mr. Mannion and Ms. Freeman, uh Business Development Manager. We coordinate with the Building Department and we um typically do zoning approval letters, so in theory. Uh when a business wants to move into a location, we always look at parking and other zoning issues and give them a zoning. I call it a zoning permit letter saying, yes, this district permits this type of use. And then they they can basically take that bank uh with regards to signing leases and so forth. Unfortunately, sometimes uh businesses don't do their due diligence, they sign a lease and then they find out later that they don't have the proper zoning. But for nine times out of ten, people will ask for a zoning approval letter before they move forward, and that's another opportunity for us. To um let them know. And uh Ms. Malali is is our our frontline gatekeeper regarding um letting businesses know. So I think there's multiple ways of getting the word out.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's it for me. Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I just wanted to dovetail before I go to uh Councilwoman Banks uh with you, uh Ms. Taylor. Uh in some way, it's in some part of this process, uh will we could we have a list? Uh well, two things I want to ask, Terry. One is, can we get a list of sixteen? Um businesses that you're speaking of at this point, just so we just know where they are and who they are. And then my second point.
Yes, that's an easy one, but I we I want to do a little um deeper um inventory before I share that with you, but we can get that to you shortly.
Okay, and and the second thing would just be, uh again, like I said, dovetailing off of Ms. Taylor. Uh will we, could we as a city recommend? Types of businesses that we would like to go in some of these spaces that we would think would be good for that? Five thousand to fifteen thousand square feet type space? That we would like to urge the developers to get into, you know what I mean? Just kind of just give us some ideas.
Yes, and and the mayor, um the the one the one particular store without our shopping center, without um. Kind of focusing too much on them, um we have been trying to set up a meeting with the landlord or owner. Manager uh with the neighborhood and our our business planning team. To focus on trying to attract the type of businesses that people would like to see in there, as opposed to the first one that comes in that's willing to. Pay the rent, so we we it's a combination of regulation and and proactive community. Involvement, engagement with with these business owners.
Great, oh I just I just like to just put that out there as you guys are going to go through this study. And uh you know, not only just pick on saying we don't want this, but we also want to talk to them about what we do want. And I think that, you know, just, you know, and try to work together with them, try to make those things happen. Uh just just an idea to put out there for you. Uh Ms. Banks, uh you you're up next.
Thank you. Um I'm in a hundred percent um agreement with this proposed study. And um if you need a um resolution, you know, this evening, I'd be more than happy to make one.
Uh I think I think we might be coming back within uh next week or 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 two with an actual action. Res- uh resolution, but um as as was pointed out, we need a little more time to further define what. What small box retails are, but hopefully um at your next regular council meeting. We'll have a a resolution to approve the moratorium.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So uh Terry, I think you have at least a consensus of the group right now to move forward in that direction. And um we'll look forward to hearing back from you with your uh with a more formal uh proposal than they're featured.
All right, thank you. I'll I'll be working closely with uh the city attorney. I know the mayor has a comment.
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, um it's taken a while to uh get a response. But uh as councilmen, those, a number of you have heard from uh residents concerned about the concentration of three. Of these stores in one location. Uh I finally, I just confirmed it this morning. Uh I have a meeting this Friday. Uh with that landlord, uh Ms. Freeman and um representatives of um. Several of the neighborhood associations that um surround that neighborhood strip center. Uh and one of the purposes of the meeting is for landlords not to undersell Southfield. But also uh for landlords to hear the kinds of things that we would be interested in seeing. Um in a space that's available to be leased, uh so um kind of concurring with um. Where you were uh just going, uh Council President. So that that's this Friday, uh I have this meeting set up.
All right, that's excellent. Very good. As always, you're on top of things, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it. That's good. Anyone else on the call having anything on this matter? Like I said, I think we have a consensus in the direction we're going, and like I said, uh Terry, you'll be back. With us. Sure.
All right, thank you.
The next meeting or two. Sound good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, great, guys. Let's move.
Mr. President, I think you're going in and out.
To.
Your voice is going in and out.
Your furniture record area. Okay, can you all hear me now?
Mr. President, the next item is the proposal of real property.
All right, let's move forward. Or is this John? Okay, John, I see.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to let everyone know that we now have a website that focuses on city-owned vacant lots. It's cityofsouthfield.com/land. Not only will this help our residents or potential residents find parcels to buy. But it'll help all of us in government because frequently we do get that question, what's for sale? And now we have one simple question or answer. It's easy to remember, cityofsouthfield.com/land. One of the parcels listed on that website is a forty point four-two acre parcel of land. On Maida, east of Butler Street. It's been vacant since two thousand twelve. We've owned it. And a resident of Lethard Village would like to buy that. Luther Hartnett, he'd like to buy that. He'd like to build a home. He'd like to live there. Is understanding and in agreement with the requirement to build a home within eighteen months. Taking that into consideration and the potential tax benefit and benefit from having another family living in the city. The city assessor has recommended a price of five thousand dollars for that parcel. Mr. Hartnett has agreed to that price. And if council approves that, hopefully we can get that moved forward and he can get started on his new home.
It always sounds good to me. Um can you all hear me? I'm sorry, now I'm feeling like you can't hear me. Can you hear me, guys?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Um that sounds fine with me. Of course, we talked about this, uh John and I earlier. Uh so I go to council and uh Mr. Hoskins, any questions for uh Mr. McFried?
No, no questions for me on this one.
Okay, Ms. Morris?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Ms. Taylor?
Um I have no questions. I'm just the the price of five thousand dollars. I know that that came from Mr. Ratcliffe, but. That seems very low, but for property here in the city, but I mean, I'll go with what he suggests, but it just seems like it's kind of low. Um and I know it held the property for a while and 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 it's been vacant and with nothing. So getting something is better than nothing, but is that the best price? Um just a question, just a thought.
If if I could respond, Council President?
All right.
That is certainly a valid concern. I know that one of the factors was that depending on the size of the home, we could be garnering about thirty-six. Thirty-seven hundred dollars yearly in taxes, so that would make it up. For comparison, there is a parcel in this similar, in the same neighborhood, in fact, that we have an offer from a resident who would like to. Extend her yard, and it's a legitimate request. She's kind of stuck. The home goes across most of the yard and the only way to get a vehicle in the back is with. Assistance of a neighbor, so there's a reasonable. So there's a reasonable reason for needing it, but the price recommended from the assessor was fifteen thousand, simply because the tax dollars would be negligible compared to a new home. So I think you're right. It, it is a good deal. But the good deal for the city of Southfield is a new tax-paying resident. That's the real price. The, um, the price for five thousand is nice. Getting it off the books as far as maintenance and liability is nice. But getting a new single-family residence home that will upgrade the neighborhood and bring in the tax dollars for any city, that is the real price. And I recognize that's a decision for council. That is the recommended, recommended price. But it is a council decision, and I should note that prices are listed on the website. But again, it notes these are only recommended, and they would include the requirement to build a home within eighteen months or face lots' loss of the property. I hope that answer is satisfactory.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much for the detailed answer and response. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, I also feel that $5,000 for, um, property in our city is extremely low. And while this may have been on our website, did we try to advertise this anywhere else? Um, if you recall, council, a few months ago, we approved, um, two sim- I mean, a similar situation off of Civic Center Drive. And the owner was, and I believe it was for two lots, and it was $10,000. And at the time, I also thought that was, um, very cheap for that property. Well, the owner has, has not started building, has since put a "for sale" sign, you know, that he's ready to build a home and to contact him on that property. And I, I'd just like to know if anyone else, um, has had an opportunity to even look at this property. It seems like there's a lot of people that would love to build a home in the city of Southfield. And to grab some land for $5,000, that seems like the deal of the century. I know we want it off our books, but I think we can ask a little bit more for this property. If you look at the homes in the area, right through here.
Okay. Well, thanks so much for all your help. I appreciate it.
Pardon me?
She was on, she needed mute.
Yeah, we need to, we need to mute if we're, uh, having other conversations, guys.
Oh, okay. So, it, it's okay. So that's my feeling. Um, I have nothing against the gentleman that, and I don't even know the gentleman that wants to purchase the property. But, um, I'd just like to know what else has the city done to try and sell this property, except to put it on a website? Have we given it to a realtor? And we try, I mean, I don't even know what property in this area sells for. So I'm not in favor of the $5,000 sale of the property. I think we can get more money. Thank you.
Council President, if I could respond?
Go right ahead.
I, I certainly understand the point. That is a good point. And council may recall that we listed quite a few parcels with a real estate agent to put it in the MLS system, which is obviously where everyone looks to buy land. And we did not sell any of them, unfortunately. Um, this website will hopefully help. I, I'm not sure that we're losing that much in Section 34. We could certainly research it for comparables in that area. I mean, this is not Civic Center, so there's, you know, location, location, location. I understand that. But again, it is council's purview. Um, the point that it was sitting vacant since 2012 probably is a good point, though.
So it's been eight years vacant?
It's, yes, sir.
Yes, but have we done anything within the eight years to try and sell it outside of giving it to one realtor? I mean, do we know if they were actively trying to sell it? And at what price were they trying to sell it for? If they had it on the box, what price were they trying to sell the property for?
Without, you have an idea of that, John?
I'm sorry, without researching it, I wouldn't want to try to guess at something like that. Um, you know, we could, we can certainly ask for more. I just would hate to have it sit vacant for another eight years.
I'd be curious what the other realtor was asking the property, um, for when it was listed on the, um, the realtor's website.
Do you know, uh, Nancy, you mentioned the other property that we, that we sold.
Correct.
And now this individual is trying to sell, sell the land to someone else?
Well, I don't know. Okay, there, there's a, there's a for sale, there's a sign that went up on the property that says they are willing to develop the property. And if my memory is correct, it was two lots. It was off of Civic Center Drive. The gentleman that came before said he was personally going to be putting a house there. There was some complications with the property. I, I can't remember if it was the sewer line or the water line. And, um, the reason we were given that it was sold so inexpensive to him was because it was going to cost between thirty to fifty thousand dollars to install whatever. And to my knowledge, there has been no diggers in this area since we even approved it. And now the sign goes up, so.
Yeah, I remember that, Nancy. This is Councilwoman Morris. There was, he was supposed to, um, build the sewer line, but I think that sale fell through.
Well, there were two, there were two, there were two individuals. The fir- I thought the first one fell through and then someone else came through. But he has not put a sewer line in or anything, only because I walk in that area all the time. And now there's a sign up to say that they will build on that property, which I find very interesting.
Uh, Council President, I can speak to this.
Pardon me?
I can speak to this. This is, uh, Ken Cyber. The, uh, original deal, uh, the seller was going to, um, the builder was going to split the lot and build two homes. Um, somehow, um, it was very clear that the council, um, made it, made him very clear that he would have to install the sewer line, which was going to be over $20,000 because on Briar Bank, it didn't extend that, uh, to that, uh, property. Um, he then backed out. The council sold it to, um, a, a realtor, a developer who builds houses. And, um, he told me that, um, he, he has a customer to build that house. He's still under the obligation from date of sale. The shovel must be in the ground within eighteen months, or the property reverts to the city and, um, he loses, um, his investment. So that has not changed. Uh, all of these properties have been, um, well, I shouldn't say all. Most of them have been advertised, or lists have been sent out to builders who are looking to build. And, um, the builders tell us that they, um, especially now with the cost of lumber and building materials being what it is, that, um, they can't make a profit. Um, so they, that's the other reason why, uh, the lots were made more affordable. Again, we'd rather see a house built and taxes collected than a lot that we're mowing the grass on, um, and were liable for. Um, and again, a number of these lots have come to us for nothing. Uh, they came through tax foreclosure. Um, and, uh, what the city is doing is going out, picking up litter and, uh, cutting the grass.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification there. Uh, anything else, uh, Ms. Banks?
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Mr. Brighwell?
As a city, since I've been on council, we seem to have a penchant for $5,000. Um, and it, and it, whenever it comes up, we're selling something for $5,000. Um, and I know that, um, there's a rationale and there's a formula. There's a, that the assessor and everybody goes through, there's a formula for everything. But I would like to, on a going-forward basis, and, and I don't want to slow this down, on a going-forward basis, I would like to see a more in-depth analysis of why we are pricing something at a certain price. And clearly, it, it becomes a business decision and/or a city decision. If something's set for a while, it's not selling, so you sell it. I understand that, that, that's the market, the market dictating what is going on. Uh, but I would like to see us price it appropriately and then roll back if it's not selling. And then that, uh, but, uh, we do have a penchant, I believe, for putting a price of $5,000 on vacant property in Southfield, so. And I hopefully, as a council, we just do a more in-depth analysis of why something was priced at a given price. That's all. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Any, any other comments from council or anybody on the call? Want to speak to this?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, Ms. Mandelbaum. Did I miss you?
Again.
I'm sorry.
Um, my, my question is, if, if there's, if there's no house built within eighteen months, what do we keep the $5,000? And then what happens with everything else that? I, I'm assuming if, if we see something going up and they need more time, I would assume, which, that we would allow, you know, "Oh, he needs more time to continue building." But if we don't see any movement, do we keep that money and it just goes back for sale?
That's correct. Um, the property goes back for sale and the city keeps the, uh, payment. It's in the contract.
And that's proposed for this sale as well. Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Was it, is, so is that what's happening with the, the uh, original comment? The gentleman about the two lots and had the eighteen year, eighteen-month timeframe. Uh, is he under the same type of deal?
Yes, and I will research that and update council.
Okay, that would be good. So John, what do you need us to do tonight?
If possible, I'd like council to approve the sale. If not, we can set it for a later date.
Okay, um, because I'm not feeling a hundred percent, uh, with the group right now. I mean, we could take a vote today, or maybe we need a little bit more, just a little bit more information and push it back to another, another, the, the next meeting. I think that's probably what I think I want to do at this point. Uh, so some of the questions that you've heard from council today, could you, uh, just kind of get some little bit more information for us? And, uh, let's, let's, uh, take it up for a vote, vote at a later meeting.
All right, sir. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Okay, I know I was, I was, I was going in and out earlier, but I think we missed item two, if I'm not incorrect, about the patio furniture at Beachwood. So I want to make sure we didn't miss that. And I thought Ms. Fields was on with us to talk about that for us. All right, hey, Terry.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. Let's do it.
Okay. Good, good evening, Council President. Good evening, council. Um, this item is, uh, a request, uh, for authorization to purchase the patio furniture for the Beachwoods Recreation Center. Um, this grant was awarded and accepted by the city in 2015. Um, the project included the renovation of the ADA accessible ramp and the installation of new patio furnishings. Um, the ADA ramp, if you remember, the ADA ramp, uh, was installed as part of the emergency repairs um, out at Beachwoods in 2019. Um, the purchase and installation of patio furnishings is a condition of the grant. Um, we worked closely with the DNR in rewriting the grant for appropriate usage of funds uh, with specs and design integrity. Um, as a result, um, of that plan, uh, we worked with purchasing um, and received two bids, one from Landscape Forms out of Kalamazoo, and then one from DSP Constructors out of Novi. Um, and our recommendation is to move forward with Landscape Forms uh, for a total amount of $52,851.54. And as a reminder, um, this grant, uh, has a 75% reimbursement at the completion of the project. Our intent is to, uh, make this purchase, uh, as soon as tomorrow, as a matter of fact, if, if, uh, council approves, uh, so that we can make sure this furniture comes in and we have it installed by December. Um, and then again, this space, uh, is the new patio outside of Beachwoods that will become a rental space, uh, for groups and, and for residents. So it is our recommendation, um, and we request that the council approve this expenditure for this, uh, for this patio furniture.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fields.
Thank you.
All right, uh, turn to council. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have any, uh, questions for this.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Um, I had a couple of questions. One is, there's, was there any background information included in our packet? Because I did not see any. Um.
No.
Okay.
I didn't.
Um, I'm, I'm glad that this is a granted, it covers 75%. Um, part of my, my question is, the, the next item we're talking about is the Beachwoods Master Plan. Do we know that this is going to stay in the picnic area, these improvements that we're making? Or is there a chance that something will get changed and it would be a waste of the 25% that we're going to be spending after this master plan is completed?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. Um, just to, to reacquaint everyone, this, um, patio has already been poured. It was part of that, um, design in the back of Beachwood. So that is there and, and will continue to be there. And this furniture will be a complement to that. The furniture certainly can be moved, but its primary use is for that space, for those rental opportunities. Um, that space is also used for the day camp. So, um, as part of the, um, master plan, that will just be part of the information and part of the amenities that we, we will continue to have there. So, no, it will not be, um, a waste of the 25%, but I, I understand you asking that question.
Okay, um, I, I have no problems with this. Obviously, I, I do think that we, we need some new equipment, um, in that area. But I guess the, the only question I have is, is it possible that you can provide us after the meeting with, um, the detail that you just spoke about?
Sure. The, the, where it's at and, um, the times, the, the placement of furniture, yes. You can do that, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Adam Protell?
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick question, uh, Terry. Is the patio furniture stationary or mobile?
Um, mobile. Uh, we can move it. It, it won't be easy to do. For instance, a passerby will not be able to move it, but we will be able to move it, um, uh, in order to complement, um, a particular rental's, um, design, um, request. So there's, uh, tables and chairs and umbrellas. There's benches. There's a couple planters. Um, and there's benches and trash cans. So, um, it, it's ver- it's very, it's very good. It's very, um, uh, sturdy, stable, long-lasting. Um, but yes, we can move it. Um, but it would take our, our crew to do that.
Yes, and then the second question is, um, so you have sufficient storage then on site at Beachwoods for that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Morris. Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, yes, thank you. I think that the patio furniture purchase would be a good, a good thing for Beachwoods. My question is, if I heard you correctly, the grant was issued in two thousand fifteen?
Correct.
So how, how, what took so long? I mean, and is it still good? How long was the, the grant for? I mean, usually, I mean, that's almost five years.
It, it, it is. Um, there were three grants when I came on board here, um, and Beachwoods, uh, was one of them. Um, when, uh, the, the grant came up, when we were talking about the improvements out at Beachwood, so we were making, we were making that part of those improvements, um, the, the renovation of the building. And certainly, as that, as that, uh, timeframe, uh, extended, uh, so did this. Uh, so what we did was ask for extensions, uh, actually Chris Riley is here with me. He's the project lead in this. Uh, we've been working closely, uh, with Mary Karlock, who happens to be, uh, working with the DNR and asked for extensions, and then we had to rewrite the grant, um, based on our, our, uh, our work and based on, uh, the changes in, um, the outdoor area and space when we had those water problems. So we continued to have post-communication, uh, with the DNR, uh, applied for the extensions and, um, were, was able to rewrite the grant and redesign it, uh, so that we could still, um, take the opportunity to, to use the grant. So, um, yes, it has been a while and it's been a long time coming for sure.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, because if you keep extending it, then they'll think you don't need it or don't want it.
Exactly.
And you're on the risk of losing, of losing it. And, and then I was going to ask what kind of grant would you answer the DNR is, when they give you the grant?
Yeah, it's again, uh, Recreation Passport Grant.
So, so is there a limit now, a timeframe as to when you have to have this extension completed?
Yep, we want this project, uh, completed by the end of December.
Okay. Okay. Those, those were the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Uh, Ms. Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, I really don't have any questions. I would just like to see, um, a map as our, as, you know, this area and what we're talking about, because there was nothing in our council packet this evening.
Sure, we can, we can provide that for council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Mr. Brightwell?
Um, I have no questions. I'm, I'm supportive of this and, uh, whenever you get ready, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we pass this, and we don't have to do a rule ten, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, whenever you get ready, I want to make a motion.
Well, you're the last person up, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, if there's nothing else, you can make a motion right now.
Okay, I think I heard you breaking up, but I, I'd like to make a motion, we approve item three for authorization to, to purchase patio furniture for Beachwood.
Uh, support Councilwoman Taylor.
All right. It's actually added to, but, uh, uh, just for clarity. Uh, but it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we authorize purchase of furniture for Beachwood Recre- Recreational Center Group Picnic Area Improvement Project as presented by Ms. Fields this evening. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please go to Rose?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Randallbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Authorization of purchase patio furniture for Beachwood Recreation Center Group Picnic Area Improvement Project.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
So while we have you on the line, Ms. uh, Fields, we can go to item four, receipt of proposals for Beachwood Park Master Plan.
Thank you, sir. Um, this would be, uh, the, uh, proposals that we received. We worked with the Purchasing Department and we received, uh, uh, proposals in March, uh, just before, uh, the COVID, uh, crisis happened. Um, this is for a comprehensive master plan for the Beachwood site. Um, we were, uh, a bit concerned with the, uh, ability to secure, uh, community feedback, um, and community engagement. Uh, the company that we were most interested out of the three we interviewed, um, both myself and Ray Tomzow, uh, from Purchasing, and interviewed, uh, OHM and his staff and crew. Uh, OHM is partnering, uh, with an organization called Projects and People. Um, their team has over a decade of working with, uh, establishing relationships in, in Detroit's entrepreneurial ecosystem there and, uh, comes to us, uh, with a focus on being able to capture, uh, the feelings and the comments, uh, from our community, uh, moving forward with this master plan. Uh, they will take, um, the, the documents that we currently have, uh, including our, our department master plan, our budget, um, and they will, um, look at trend analysis and, and demographics. Um, and their final task will be to present their completed plan to the staff, the Parks and Recreation Board, and this council. Uh, so we are asking, uh, for council's support and approval, uh, of awarding OHM Advisors out of La Lona, uh, the, uh, master plan project, uh, for thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, um, moving forward for our department and our city.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes.
I will go to, I'm gonna start with Ms. Taylor. Any questions, comments?
Uh, yeah, um, if we agree to do this, how long will it take for them to present the, uh, master plan to you?
Uh, Councilwoman Taylor, it will take three months. Um, they, they, they told us three to four months. Actually, they said three months depending on, uh, when the, the project started, um, but the timeframe is ninety days.
Okay, and, and when, and giving them guidance, what kinds of things were you looking for, for them to come back, to have included in our master plan?
Um, it, it, it wasn't as much as, uh, what we were concerned about them including. It was the, the, their ability to, um, be able to, uh, set some, some things up for our community to be able to participate in. So whether we do surveys, or whether we do Zoom meetings, um, or whether we do some outdoor, uh, time where we can capture, uh, what our, our folks want, uh, at Beachwoods, um, that was really our concern. So they had some really good ideas moving forward in that. Um, we wanted to make sure that we let them know that this wasn't, we didn't have any, any, um, any thoughts or any, uh, conclusions as to what we wanted to, to put at Beachwoods. Um, I shared with them that we've heard everything from, um, a splash pad to, uh, more picnic shelters and pavilions, to walking paths. Um, we, we've had some people talk to us, uh, from the community about an amphitheater out there. Um, my, my own, one of my goals, uh, was to have it a, a walkable space, that we needed to be able to navigate that space safely. Uh, whatever we add or whatever improvements we should, should, should suggest happening there, we want to make sure that, that folks on the property can get to it safely. Um, so we didn't have any preconceived ideas on what we were looking for, uh, or have any ideas from our department and looking for some people to support that. We really want to hear from our community and find out what they, they want to see going, going forward.
Oh, okay, so what I'm hearing is that they're going to also have some time to talk to the residents to get their input and ideas.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Those are the only questions I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Um, so Terry, just a quick, how, how long have we been working on, uh, soliciting bids for the development of the Beachwoods Park Master Plan? Has it been about a year and a half or so?
No, um, we, well, we, we closed down the golf course, um, and then, uh, we wanted to move forward with that master plan process, and we did so. Um, and then came and then had the, the results in March. So we waited a period of time through this COVID, um, to, to, to really see where we were going to be, how we were going to be able to talk with our community. We just didn't feel like it was appropriate to, um, to continue to, to wait, um, but to really find innovative ways and creative ways to be able to, to talk with our residents. And, um, that's why we, we chose to move forward at this time.
So just wanted to, uh, circle back to the golf course. So, um, the suggestion for what should happen with the golf course, will that be embedded in this master plan? Or are we looking at something else or using someone else for that?
Well, with this, this is part of this, this consultant's and this company's, um, uh, task is to be able to capture information, to find out if there is, um, a, a desire from, uh, a great part of our, our residents to, um, to invest in a golf course, to invest in a three-hole, to perhaps expand our driving range. Um, it really is, uh, an open floor plan, uh, to find out what our residents want to see there. So, uh, this is, this, you know, we, we worked with our, we worked with, um, that consultant earlier in regards to golf to find out, you know, how much it was going to cost for us to bring it back up to speed and, and had a number that, that no one in that community, uh, in our administration or myself, um, w- was willing to go forward with. Um, and as a result of that, now we want to find out what folks do want to move forward with in that space, in that acreage. And it may come up again, um, uh, Councilwoman Morris, that, that there's a group out there that, that wants to invest in golf. I, I, I don't know, but, um, I think that as we gain that feedback, I think part of the, part of the task for this consultant is to take into consideration what we already have as a department. So we have a nine-hole golf course at Evergreen. We have a driving range. Um, and, and so some of what we already have here, um, that people are participating in will be part of that information that's shared and, and part of hearing from folks and, and finding out how they want to invest, what, what they want to do with that, that park. Um, a- and again, any, a- anything from, from what we've talked about previously, I, I know we've all had conversations. Residents have already been very vocal about, uh, some of the, some of the things they'd like to see there, some of the amenities they'd like to see. Um, part of the task will be to look around and, and see the users that are in the Beachwoods Park area. Um, and also take a look at, you know, are we looking at families? Are we looking at seniors? Um, we have a, a, a mixed group of folks who we want to be able to, uh, serve. And what's the best improvements that we can, can make there so that, so that we can meet the needs of our community? Uh, I, I won't tell, I won't say that it, it won't include golf. Um, it, it could, um, but I, I think that it would be kind of, it, it would be a challenge to have two nine-hole golf courses, it, it, to be able to support that. That was part of the feedback we heard, um, from the golf consultant, is, is, um, we're, we're really meeting the needs of our golfers right now, um, at Evergreen. Um, I think that you'll see some of our information as we, as we move forward toward the end of our season. Our, our number of rounds, uh, this year has, has definitely, um, uh, surpassed last year. Um, and we still have capacity there. So all those pieces of information will be shared, um, and taken into consideration when, when we move forward in our investments at Beachwood.
Okay, and, and I apologize if you've already given this answer, but what is the anticipated, uh, completion date for this master?
That's okay. Um, they've said three months.
Three months.
I think that, yep, depending on when they start, yep, three months.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Um, I, I have no questions. I think this is a good idea to figure out, um, what we need to do with, with this park, and I really do hope that we're able to get, um, sufficient resident participation, um, especially from the residents that live within this neighborhood, um, as they're the ones who, you know, are more likely, uh, to use the park since it's a, a close proximity to their, to their residents. So, um, even though the entire, it's open to the city, but I would like to make sure we do get sufficient participation from those residents. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, most of my, most of my questions were answered, um, by Terry already, uh, Councilwoman Taylor and Morris, uh, brought up the bulk of my questions. Um, and I too think this is a good idea for us to figure out what we can really deal with that space. So, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Hoskins. Mr. Brightwell?
Um, no questions. All my questions, all my questions were answered. Thank you.
Sir, uh, Ms. Banks?
Um, thank you. Didn't we talk about this in December? I'm sorry? I guess my question to Ms. Fields, um, didn't we, um, didn't we have a discussion on the Beachwoods, um, area in the golf course in December?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so was that a study?
Y- yeah, that was a separate, that was a separate study for, uh, golf. Um, that was the consultants that were coming in. This is, this is totally separate. Um, a- and so was the, so was the golf information. What we wanted to find out from an objective party and a, um, uh, professional organization that didn't have really any horses in the race, uh, was to tell us what it would take for us to bring that course up to speed. Uh, we had a lot of different, uh, people, the first round that we put that, uh, RFP out there, we had a lot of people giving us information for a master plan for a golf course. And what we wanted, uh, was information on how to bring the current golf course up to speed as far as irrigation and customer service and ADA accessibility. So, um, that was a separate RFP. They came in and gave us an objective point of view for the golf course itself. This is for the entire, um, the park. So this includes the golf course, it includes the driving range, uh, it includes, uh, a- all of the property, uh, there. And so what we now want to do is find out how folks want to use the property, um, that, that is at Beachwoods right now.
So, because in December, if my memory is correct, I thought we went around the table and we all discussed different, um, things that we would like to see at Beachwoods. Um, and I apologize if, did this ever come back to us?
Um, that was, that was part of our speak going forward, uh, with council, is that we, as a result of the closing of the golf course, that we would move forward in, in bringing on, uh, a consultant to work with us to come up with an overall master plan for that property. So you're right, that, that, that evening, uh, council did share some of their thoughts. I remember you had talked about maybe, um, putt-putt golf. You had talked about maybe increasing, maybe having a three-hole. I think it was, it might have been you, uh, Councilwoman Banks, who talked about a, a three-hole course. I'm not sure, but there were a lot of ideas that were around, uh, the table and shared around the table, um, in support of us going forward with, with the master plan for the Beachwoods Park, the overall, the overall Beachwoods Park.
So will, will those suggestions and recommendations, and I think we even discussed like, you know, a, a, a family, and I don't know if it was a family putt-putt or a family three par, some type of family activity over there, will that all be shared with this new study? I guess I'm a little confused here, because wasn't it the same, wasn't it the same, um, the company that we're proposing to award this to? Wasn't it the same company that made the presentation in December?
N- no, that was, uh, his name was Rick. Um, it was, uh, uh, boy, why can't I think of it? It was the foundation, the Golf Foundation, the National Golf Foundation.
So they were primarily golf courses. Um, and to answer your question, everyone's input will be part of this master plan. They will, they will come and, and talk with all of us. Um, they will talk with residents, they will have brainstorming sessions, uh, they'll do surveys. So, uh, we want to glean, uh, what our residents would like to see, um, uh, here, uh, going forward. And, and I believe our council, our, our residents here in Southfield. So everyone's input will be part of this master plan.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I, and I was going to ask if they would, you know, include council because I, my memory serves me correct, there were a lot of good ideas that were run, went around to people in December.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Banks. Uh, is anyone else on the call that want to add to this conversation before we move forward?
The only thing I want to add, Ms. Fields, I appreciate what you guys are doing, totally in favor of it. Um, here's my charge to not you. This, this is not directed at you by any means, but I am tired of hearing OHM coming up at every doggone meeting that we have. Where are the minority consultants, contractors and so forth to do this work out here in Southfield as well? And so I'm just putting a charge out to the administration, uh, all our senior staff, our purchasing department, everybody. Guys, I'm just, I just want to be on record and of saying that I, I think we can do better. And I want to see more diversity in this, in these types of matters. These are great, these are great projects that we're doing, but I keep hearing the same names every time we get a contract coming on. It's the same people every time. So I'm, I'm not going to sit on my soapbox long at all. I just wanted to say that for the record, uh, this evening. But at the same time, I'm also saying, Ms. Fields, I think what you're doing is great. I'm in support of it. And, uh, do we need to take any action on what you presented for us this evening?
We, we would like to move forward on this, um, in a timely fashion, um, as well.
So you're asking us to approve the, the proposed Beachwood Park Master Plan?
Just, right, just to support us forward with OHM. Yep.
Is that correct?
It is correct.
Is there a motion, council?
I make a motion that we approve item, let's say, let me back up for a second. We, I, I make a motion that we approve the proposal for the Beachwood Master Plan. It's reported.
Okay, been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve item four on this evening's agenda, which is the receipt of proposals for Beachwood, uh, Park Master Plan. Uh, having heard from everyone already, I'll just ask, please call the roll.
Banks? Us. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Receive the proposals for Beachwood Park Master Plan approved.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Fields, uh, for your time and for your work in this effort. Uh, we look forward to seeing what comes out of it.
Thank you.
There's going to be something very nice.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We'll move to item five, Detroit Regional Partnership Membership for twenty, twenty slash twenty-one, uh, year.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. This is Rochelle Freeman, Business and Economic Development Director. Again, I have the last couple of items on the agenda this evening. This, um, request is for the city to maintain our relationship with the Detroit Regional Partnership. The Detroit Regional Partnership was formed last year. It's kind of a spin-off from the Detroit Regional Chamber. A group of businesses and philanthropic CEOs formed this organization to do business attraction, um, from out-of-state and international companies. It put together a very strong team that works with all of the partners. The city does have an excellent relationship with Oakland County and with the state of Michigan. However, when they're doing their economic development, their interests are not directly the city of Southfield, but more the whole county or the entire state. And this gives us an opportunity to be at the table, which we would not be allowed to participate in any of these site selector meetings or being able to submit, um, requests for proposals directly. Last year, we were able to attract, um, two businesses. One is FCR, which is a call center, and they're hiring over two hundred full-time positions for Southfield residents, as well as Wireless Car, which is a high-tech mobility company, and they just located in our city center district. Um, it's cost ten thousand dollars for us to participate in this organization. And, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the organization. We were originally looking for consent, but if it's possible to vote on it tonight, that would be wonderful too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And how long have we been a member?
The organization's only been i- in place for one year, and we were allowed to participate last year. The city of Southfield and the city of Novi are the only two local governments. All the rest of the organizations are regional or county, um, governments.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Yes, uh, Morris?
Uh, no questions for me. Looks like the membership has already paid off, so.
Yes. Thank you. Yep, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, no questions. I concur with, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Morris. I think the membership has already paid for itself, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Banks?
Um, I, is this, am I on? Yeah, oh, I have no questions, and I think we should renew the membership. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, no questions. If I have a, uh, in the third paragraph, in this third sentence, there's a misspelling there. It has L-I-F-E. I think you want to have L-I-V-E, live and virtual.
Oh, thank you. Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay, otherwise, um, this sounds good to me.
All right, Eagle Eye. See you over there. Thank you.
Well, I'm here for the reason, all right?
All right, thanks, uh, Mr. Brightwell. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Very good. Let's go to the vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We'll take the vote tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I would need a motion first, sir.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Detroit Regional Partnership Membership.
Support. This is Councilwoman Morris.
I just been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we do approve the, uh, partnership membership, uh, for Detroit, Detroit Regional Partnership, I'm sorry, uh, for the year twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, as we have done in the past year. Um, we discussed it. Everyone seems in favor of it in the official roll, so Madam Clerk, now, uh, asked for the roll call.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Detroit Regional Partnership Membership for October first, twenty twenty-two, September thirty of twenty twenty-one approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman, and thank you, council once again. Uh, but that concludes most of our business for the evening.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Cruz, I believe there's two more items on the agenda. Sorry, sorry to disappoint.
It's four more items.
Okay, I must have pulled up the old, uh, agenda, sorry. Go right here. What's, what's our next one?
Thank you. Um, the city of Southfield has, um, as you know, has, um, signed a letter of agreement with Contour Companies to sell the former Northland properties. And in preparation for the sale, the city discussed offering incentives to Contour Companies. One of the offers was in terms of a, a PA two-ten, a commercial rehabilitation exemption. Um, number six and number seven are to provide an overview of the request that has been made by Contour Companies. Contour Companies is not, we're not eligible to approve any, um, incentives under this act until they actually purchase the property. So this is just an overview of what they're looking for. And then number seven would be to res- for us to establish a public hearing on, um, November sixteenth, so that we can take action on just establishing the district. Again, the district is just setting up the framework for the incentive. So should things not work out with Contour Companies, the district does not obligate us to anything. It just creates, um, the ideal setting for other businesses to come and be attracted to that property. So we're not committing to anything should, should things not work out. But we are being, um, proactive in getting the framework set up should things move forward, which we're all definitely looking forward to. So, um, we have a representative, um, Dave from Contour Companies, as well as Luke Bonner and Tom Gritter, who are, um, assisting with the project. So I'd like to turn this over, if I may, to Dave for an introduction, I believe?
Yes, Shelley, thank you. Good evening, Council President Cruz. Good evening, council members, and good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, David Dedbukai with Contour Companies. Um, Contour is very excited, uh, about the redevelopment of Northland and the entire hundred-plus acre site. This redevelopment will definitely catch the national eye. It could, uh, be argued that it's one of the best, or the large, one of the largest redevelopments in the, in the region, definitely in Michigan, and is a very exciting project for everybody, I think. Um, the time is now for this to start, I think, to bring new air to, to Southfield, to Oakland County, and to the state. Uh, the scope of work starts with a long, long, uh, large-scale demolition, uh, all-new infrastructure, which will include water, sewer, pump stations, and on. Uh, phase one consists of roughly fourteen hundred new multifamily units, and the redevelopment of the old Hudson's building. Uh, we are moving forward, as Shelley mentioned, uh, we are under PA, and we're moving forward daily with, uh, due diligence and, um, working with the city and working with, uh, Bonner Advisory Group on, um, the incentive package. I'll turn it over to Luke now.
Thanks, David. Um, good evening, Council President Cruz. There was a council, Nick Seiber, City Administrator Zorn. Uh, thanks, Shelley, as well, for all of your help. So this evening, for your consideration, is the, um, setting a public hearing to establish the district for PA two-ten, uh, commercial rehabilitation, uh, district. For, uh, our purposes, I think it's important to note that, um, a few years ago, I believe the city of Southfield sort of set forth on a path for creating an incentive, um, environment around the redevelopment of, of the shopping center, the approval of the conceptual Brownfield Plan. Um, that Brownfield Plan, uh, listed a number of eligible activities for reimbursement for, um, future developer, uh, and the future redevelopment of, of Northland Shopping Center. This particular, um, incentive, um, is something that, as our team is seated down doing our financial due diligence and looking at the complexity of the Northland Shopping Center redevelopment, um, looking at the timing in terms of the, the horizon it's going to take to actually break ground to full build-out. Um, we wanted to, um, utilize this particular incentive as an additional, uh, I guess, financial, um, as something additional that create financial certainty over the build-out period. So when I say build-out period, uh, we are looking at approximately four, um, to five years' time, uh, from when construction starts, starting with demolition, putting all of the infrastructure and start phasing it enough, including converting the Hudson's building into the Hudson, what would be the Hudson City. During that period, because of the amount of investment, and like I said, the complexity for the redevelopment, uh, what this PA two-ten would do, uh, which I believe this is a tool that, um, the city council has adopted in the past for other projects. I believe it was the Dura Headquarters, um, that used this tool for. Um, essentially what this, um, tax abatement tool will do, uh, was it will freeze the value of the property in place over that build-out and lease-up construction period. And when I say freeze, uh, what will essentially occur, um, once Contour closes, um, is that this property will be assessed at the transaction value of the deal, uh, which is roughly nine-point-eight million dollars. So the property we, which is valued at zero today, the property will be valued based on the sale, and that value, based on the sale, will be frozen for up to four years, over which time period Contour will be building and developing the property and creating a significant amount of value that at the end of that four years, and that tax, that PA two-ten tax payment expires, uh, then that new revenue will be, um, available for, uh, the Downtown Development Authority. And what would be considered a phase two of incentives would be the amendment of the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan that the city adopted in two thousand seventeen, which would be amended to reflect on today's project. So, one of the things that we wanted to, uh, make sure, um, and there's, the PA two-ten application actually requires additional information, um, which really afforded us an opportunity this evening to talk about some of those additional economic benefits to the community. Uh, but one of the things that, uh, will occur, and I just mentioned, that the property goes from essentially zero value, zero, um, economic activity, um, that after an estimated two-hundred-and-eighty-five-million-dollar investment, that will unlock a substantial amount of economic development activity, including an increase in real estate property taxes of approximately six million dollars that, um, between the Brownfield and the DDA, I would now have access to. Um, secondly, this is in the Oak Park School District, um, but it is worth noting that based on other projects like this that Contour develops around the country, um, what we anticipate seeing is a potentially two-hundred-and-eighty new children living in this development, um, that could attend Oak Park Public Schools. Um, I think that number might be a little light, but I'm just extrapolating based on other properties that Contour manages across the country. And if we just took the simple formula of the state revenue sharing per student, uh, which is roughly seven thousand, that the school district would also realize roughly another two million dollars per year in state revenue sharing, uh, due to the increase in students to that school district. Um, and then the last bit of information, um, we did, um, pull some pretty interesting economic data, uh, that was done by the National Association of Home Builders, um, who conducted a economic impact study related to multifamily housing, uh, developments and their impact on the local community. So as we're anticipating, um, in, in year one, uh, full build-out, um, that there is an opportunity to, uh, support an additional hundred-and-sixty jobs locally, um, that there's an opportunity to create another eight million dollars in local wages and salaries, and another three-point-six billion dollars in, uh, local business revenue, uh, that is very close by to this, uh, and even part of this development. Uh, these are very conservative estimates, um, but again, I think they help create uh, sort of this, um, this picture, I believe, of the impacts that this project will have, not only on tax revenue, but on surrounding businesses, and then certainly on the school district. So as Contour has, has moved forward as a developer, um, for this property, um, I want to note that they were not attracted to the Northland Shopping Center because of the availability of incentives. They were attracted to Northland Shopping Center because it's an unbelievable opportunity in this community to follow a vision that this community set forward for mixed-use, um, development, utilizing the assets that are currently on the property. Um, but also, um, because it's, you know, what Contour will repeatedly say it's their home, and they're doing here what they do best, and they're doing here what- they're doing here what they do best, and they're doing here what they've been doing across the country, experts at. So the incentives specifically on this one is we'll have an opportunity in the future to bring the Brownfield Plan, hopefully, to your consideration. The incentives help create more economic certainty going through this construction and build-out period, ultimately that will lead to a highly successful project for Contour and for the city of Southfield.
Thank you, Luke, for that presentation. Mr. President, I do just want to make one correction on one of the statements. Our city assessor, Mr. Radcliffe, will work with all of the parties to be to set the value of the property. I've heard him say a million times that the value does not chase the sale price. So I don't know if Mike is on the line right now, but I think he would want me to make that statement. And I do, just, we do have another item to correct. And number seven, the actual district number is number four, not number two. So when you, if you do choose to move forward with setting the public hearing on November 16th, it should be to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District, Northwest Highway Service Drive Commercial Rehabilitation District, number four. Thank you.
I'm just so very excited about this right now. I don't know about the rest of you all, and I really want to thank our mayor and all of our members of the council and staff that have worked with Northland Steering Committee to finally get us to this point. You know, it's been, it's been a number of years, but we stuck to our guns and we, and we held out for what we wanted to see happen there. And this group is really, is just a fine group of individuals that are coming in, that are about to make history once again at the Northland site. And so I'm just very excited about the whole thing. That sounds great to me. But, so I just wanted to say that at this point, but of course, I want to let my, my colleagues chime in as well. And I'll start with Mr. Brightwell, since he is, was our chair, or is our chair of the Northland Steering Committee that helped to make this happen. Mr. Brightwell?
So it's not too much more I can say right now than the fact we have a group of very good professionals that make up the Northland Committee. And everybody constantly moves forward and they really get into the nuts and bolts of what needs to be done. So with that, I'll just leave that to my, to the other council members to, to have your pleasure in asking questions, because that's what we do on the Northland Committee, drill down. So that's it, sir. Thank you.
All right. And thank you, Mr. Brightwell, again, for your leadership on this, on this committee. You've got us where we needed to be. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. I have no questions. I'm also really, really excited with this proposed plan and look forward to the groundbreaking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
In favor of this project, and I'm very excited about it. I have no additional questions. We vetted this pretty well. All I can say is thank you for your interest and your excitement in redeveloping Northland. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Yes, I too am very excited and ask all of my colleagues about this development. It's just been a delight speaking with you and hearing your plans for Northland as a member of the Northland Committee, and I too look forward to the groundbreaking.
Very good. Same here. Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'm, I'm very excited with the prospect, what they plan to do. We've seen some of the rendering to see how much they're, they're planning to spend. This, this will be a turning point in the city, especially in that, in that area, which will do wonders for our city. So I'm definitely very excited and have no further questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hoskins?
Thank you. I just echo everything my colleagues say. I am very excited about this as well. I think it could be game-changing for our city and for our area. I did have one question, just to clarify. Did I hear you say from, once we break ground, it'd be four to five years before we, for you're done with one of the phases? Did I hear that correctly, or?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. Sorry, David, I just talked over you.
Yeah, it's okay.
That was my only question.
All right. Very good. Anyone else on the call have anything to comment or, or any questions? All right, hearing none. Ms. Freeman, what you need?
I need a resolution, I need a motion to approve the resolution to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District, Northwest, Northwestern Highway Service Drive Commercial Rehabilitation District, number four, under PA 210 of 2005, as amended for 21500 Northwestern Highway.
So, I'm going to try to, Councilwoman Morris, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, please, hold on a second. We're, the motion is to schedule the public hearing.
That's correct.
Not to establish the district. We're, we're, we're giving the public hearing for consideration.
For, for November 16th.
The consideration, so it's a public hearing that we're scheduling for consideration of the application.
Yes, thank you.
Everybody clear?
Thank you.
Is that item seven?
Item number six. We got two items.
No, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. There, there was some miscommunication in the lettering that number six was an overview. Again, the company cannot submit an application at this time. They do not own the property. But number seven, so they gave an overview as number six. There is no action for number six. Number seven is the action item to request to schedule the public hearing for November 16th.
But you have district number two on.
And, and that was, it should be number four.
It should be four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So six, so we've covered six then. We got our overview. So now we just need the motion for the pub, to establish the public hearing.
Yes, this is Councilwoman Morris. I'd like to make a motion that we establish a public hearing for the establishment of a Commercial Rehabilitation District, number four, under PA 210 of 2005.
I support that. And it's item seven. Okay, I support.
All right. So it's been moved by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilman Brightwell that we approve this, that we have a public hearing of the establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District of Northwestern Highway Service Drive Commercial Rehabilitation District Four, under PA 210 of 2005, as amended at 21500 Northwestern Highway. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Resolution adopted to schedule the public hearing for the establishment of Commercial Rehabilitation District, Northwestern Highway Service Drive District, number four, PA 210 of 2015.
Thank you very much.
And the date on that again is?
November 16th, I believe, is the, will be the hearing.
It'll be our November 16th meeting. Okay, very good. Okay. Well, Ms. Freeman, gentlemen, we appreciate you, and we'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All righty. Thank you. All right, so we are now at item eight, which is pretty formal. We do this every year. Receipt of bids on printing for the 2020 Annual Report slash 21 Calendar from the Community Relations Department. I believe Mr. Mannion is going to speak to that. Michael, are you on?
He's on. I see him. Can't hear him.
Maybe, is he on mute? Nope.
No, he's not on mute.
Michael Mannion, are you with us?
I hear something in the background, but he's not.
Something's here. He's there.
I muted.
Yeah. Mr. President, this is, yes.
Real quick, yeah.
This is Administrator Zorn. As you indicated, this is the annual approval for the printing of the city calendar for the 2020 Annual Report and the 2021 Calendar from, from the city. Our purchasing department put this down. Twenty-three vendors downloaded the bid. The purchase, purchasing department opened the bid, and we're proposing to go with the low bidder, Printwell, from Taylor, Michigan, in the amount of $25,760.70. We did, as indicated in the summary, there were three low bidders, and Printwell was the lowest. We've worked with them in the past. The print, the calendar brings in about $19,200 in paid advertisement. The total cost of the expenditures, the $25,760.70, asking council to adopt a resolution. This can certainly wait till the, our next regular meeting, if council soul desires.
Okay. And so you already did mention that we have worked with this group before, so we've seen their work. We're getting, we're printing approximately seventy-three, seventy-four thousand?
That's, that is correct. I'm looking.
And so we're going, so there'll be to every, to all the residents, and then we usually keep about two or three thousand to, for new residents as they come in through the year, and for people that come to City Hall or something like that, that didn't leave, maybe wanted one or something of that nature, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Sounds straightforward enough. Like I said, we, this is kind of a routine thing. So again, I would ask us to go ahead and take a vote this evening, unless anybody had any concerns. I'll just open it up to the group real quick. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item eight, the receipt of bid for the printing of the two, 2020 Annual Report and the 2021 Calendar for the Community Relations Department.
Support?
All right, so it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the printing of the 2020 Annual Report, 2021 Calendar for the city of Southfield by way of the Community Relations Department. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
The receipt of the bids on printing the 2020 Annual Report slash 2021 Calendar for the Community Relations Department.
All right. I just want to make one addendum to that. Can y'all make me look a little bit lighter? I was looking a little chubby on the last one. I want to look a little bit, a little bit smaller. Well, very good. So we'll look forward to seeing that come out. We know we've won a lot of awards on our calendars over the years, and so hopefully this will be another one that will be, again, awarded or at least recognized for the good work that we're doing out here. All right. Item nine, three-month license agreement, FedEx Ground Packaging System.
Yes, Mr. President. Alice Seavis could not be with us this evening, our DDA Executive Director. Therefore, I'll be handling the item. The Downtown Development Authority was approached by FedEx, located on Greenfield in Oak Park, about leasing a small area of property at the Northland site for a three-month period to restore approximately a hundred pickup and delivery vans. The proposed lease area is, as I understand it, near the, the mini police station. The, they are proposing for three months, a lease of $50,000 or $16,670, or $667 per month. The lease would commence on November 1st and end on January 31st. We are, they'll be responsible for providing maintenance, security, keeping the site clean, picking up rubbish and such. We reserve the right to terminate, terminate the agreement and revoke the license granted for any reason whatsoever upon thirty-day notice. And we are asking, because the start date is November 10th, we are asking for council to act on this and that the agreement will be authorized, the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease agreement with FedEx Ground Packaging System on behalf of the city of Southfield upon review and approval by the city attorney.
And it's, it's just, just my, my thinking on this real quick is just that it's probably because it's their high time, a busy time, and they need a little space for Christmas and packages moving forward and all that stuff. And there's, these are not big rig trucks, these are the vans.
You, you are correct, Mr. President. The, and then coupled with the COVID, this will most likely for ground chippers be one of the busiest holiday seasons on record.
Got you. All right. Well, as long as it doesn't interfere with Contour and what they're trying to do at this point, you know, I think that's, that sounds like a decent plan. I will turn to council just for any questions or other comments. So, Ms. Banks?
I think this is an excellent use, an excellent temporary use, and I'm in full support. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, this is a win-win. Everybody benefits from this, and so moving forward. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Hoskins?
Yep, I echo what my colleagues have said. This is, I'm glad we're getting some use out of this for the time being.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. The, the question I have, and maybe I miss this, is this going to interfere with, with Contour? And because they bought the, the property?
Con, if I may, Mr. President, Contours has executed a purchase agreement. They are in their due diligence period. This area that the trucks will be in is outside of the area that they'll be doing work. I can tell you, Contours was on-site last Thursday doing their due diligence. As council will recall, we've done a substantial amount of environmental work. They are now continuing to conduct physical investigations of, of the site. The bulk of that work pertains to the old mall itself, as well as the underground. It does include the powerhouse and such. But straightforward, we do, we do not anticipate this will impact them in any way.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Morris?
No comments. I'm in support. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Taylor?
No comments. I concur with my colleagues. I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Great. Can I adjourn the motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the proposed contract temporary use of Northland as presented. Contract temporary use of Northland as presented.
Support.
Alright, we're moved by Miss Taylor, supported by Mister Mandelbaum, that we do support the three month lease agreement with FedEx Ground Patch. Packaging System, um, starting November tenth. Um, is there any other questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes, could you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes, three month license agreement with FedEx Ground Package System Incorporated adopted.
Alright, very good. Uh, I guess that's city's Christmas present for this year. Alright, now, since I do have the, the appropriate agenda, I think we are done with all of our. Discussion items for this evening, so now we can move to communications. So we'll give a moment for people to chime in. Whoever wishes to speak under the communications portion, you'll have three minutes uh to give your comments. And uh, like I said, we'll give everybody a moment to get on.
Excuse me, Mister President, I'm sorry, I will, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'll unmute the people when you're ready.
I am ready.
Okay. Just, okay, unmute it.
Alright, so for again, any residents that wish to speak uh for communications this evening. Uh, you will have three minutes and we'll let you know when your time is uh finished.
Gerard Mullin, do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Gerard Mullin. Post office box one fifty five, Southfield, Michigan. Four eight zero three seven. Mister President. Tonight, I would like to talk about section eleven point eighteen. Eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled amendments, which describes how to amend. The Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, eleven point eighteen conflicts with the not so easy. Two-step Michigan state law, AKA the Michigan Home Rule Act. Thus making section eleven point eighteen null and void. Eleven point eighteen became null and void when the Southfield authors of eleven point eighteen. Attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the Southfield City Charter. That's when the second step in a two-step process got deleted. Two steps are required. Required step number one, the Southfield City Council, that's you folks. Must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then the next step, that is, they deleted step. Required step number two, the missing step. The Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election. The aforementioned proposed charter amendment. Unfortunately, eleven point eighteen deletes totally step number two, the ballot election. In a word, you folks here on this city council. Need to fix section eleven point eighteen. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
The bell rang, watch the beeps. Hello?
Hello?
Okay, uh, before I get started, I'd like to ask you, Mister Chairman, are, are the council members zooming? And if so, why are the residents not allowed to participate in the Zoom meeting process?
No, we're working via WebEx as opposed to Zoom.
Is it visual?
No, it's not.
Hmm, cuz I heard one of the council people say that they could see another council person, so I'm amazed that you can see through the telephone. But be that as it may.
Well, I take that back, I apologize and I'll, and I'mma hold your time right now. Uh, we can't, we, we can use it, but we're not obligated to use it.
Okay, so I guess I can start my time now.
Alrighty.
And I wanted to correct you, Mister Chairman, you, about your comments as far as Northland, you said that the city, um, you know, you held steady. Until you got what you wanted with the, with Northland. If you remember back when you took the money from the cable department, I advised the city not to get into the real estate business. When you spent the money for the visioning session, I asked the city not to incur the expenditure. When you decided to develop the, the property. I asked you not to become a developer and you attempted to do so. So to say that you uh held out, you were trying to do it. And the residents advised you not to do it. So we know that the Northland Steering Committee is the secret committee, like a lot of those secret accounts. When the city wants to move money around and they don't want the residents to know about it. You know, Mister Chairman, you could do better to fill the void during these meetings. If you not insinuate the wrong thing about me, and I'm gonna talk about me because you said it about me tonight. You have a PhD and you made an inaccurate uh assessment that I attacked Shelley. It is not attacking someone when you question their intent of the process. And the necessity to bring action to city council. It does not connote an attack. She might be doing her job, but the decision is not, if the decision is not in the best interest of our community long range. Then the action might be considered mediocre at best. I want all these council people that we have in the City of Southfield to remember that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. It's great that we support businesses, but keep this in mind, when you need a ninety nine million dollar bond proposal or when you need a millage. You don't um circulate your literature to the business community, you circulate your literature to the taxpayers, the people that are at the top. So just like you support businesses and you want economic development, what I would like for you to do is to consider. Giving the residents a Trump virus pandemic um tax relief plan, so to speak. You're doing it for businesses, for them to downsize so they won't leave and move from the City of Southfield? Why don't you consider doing that for the residents so that the residents won't consider leaving and moving to Southfield and going to Troy? Thank you, and I'm gonna ask the city clerk or whoever is working the bell to stop ringing the darn bell when I'm speaking. It's very rude and it's a ta- and it's an attack on my three minutes to speak. Ring the bell when the time is up.
Time is up, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm counting too, so we have the same time clock.
Yes. Yes, we do, thank you.
Mister President, we'll sit, we have anyone else?
Okay.
It does not look like we have anyone else for communications this evening.
Alright, thank you, we'll, we'll close up communications and we're gonna go to the council. And uh, before I come to my, my council colleagues. I do just wanna say, I, I know that there's been a number of residents. Particularly in the area of the Bell Road. And the roundabouts. About artwork going up there. Uh, um. We're, we're not trying, trying to make any distractions for people or anything of that, that nature. Our efforts are to continue to beautify the area. And keep things looking very nice over there for everyone in that particular area, but we do hear you. And uh, I know the mayor has talked, talked. Sorry, I still got this pneumonia thing going on. Has talked to a number of people and I'm open to talking to anyone that wishes to talk about this as well. But uh, I want the community to know that we are, we are open ears, we're here. And uh, we want to be responsive to you in the final way that everybody. In uh. What's gonna, what's happening in that area, so. Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, as my part of council's uh comments today. Uh, I'll go to our member and. I'm at Miss Taylor, Miss Taylor, any comments this evening?
Uh, and you were breaking up terrible, terrible ways, so a lot of, a lot of what you said, I did not hear clearly.
I'm sorry, can you all hear me?
But um.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Hear you, uh, Council President, perhaps you can't hear us?
Apologies, that's what I, I, I knew something was wrong, but. Can hear you all now, happened there. So I was going, I was going around, well, I'll just kinda just repeat real quickly, I was just speaking of some of the residents that have had concerns. Uh, around the Bell Road area and the roundabouts. And I just wanted everybody to know that we are hearing those comments and that we are working to make a mutual. And amenable situation for everybody um in that area. Cuz all, all we're trying to do is make sure we beautify and keep that area looking as wonderful as it already is. That was all I had to say for the evening, and then I want to turn it over to you, Miss Morris, if you want to start off this evening, council comments?
Oh, oh, thank you, Council President, yes, I just want to just say how excited I am to see all of the people uh early voting. Uh, there have been millions of people that have voted across the country and we, we see thousands of people in the City of Southfield. So I just wanna encourage everybody to keep voting, vote early, um, and you know, your voice matters and um. Uh, you can really um be accountable and responsible for uh the direction of your future with your vote. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
And thank you for that, that's great, and again, as you all are voting, make sure you're doing both sides of the ballot. You know, so it's, you know, there are items on front and the back.
That is true, thank you.
We don't wanna leave anything out.
Yes, thank you for that, thank you.
Uh, Miss Taylor?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, I, I concur with uh Councilwoman Morris, reminding everyone to continue to vote and vote early. Uh, also, continue to um stay safe, wear your mask. Uh, I hear that there might be a second wave with the COVID nineteen stuff, so don't take anything for granted, don't get lax. Um, we still have to do what we need to do, so um, I just want us to do our early voting and stay safe. I also wanna say thank you to our fire chief, uh Menifee, and I wanna send out uh best and well wishes to the fire department as well as to um. The library and the library staff, they had a couple of COVID cases come out. And uh, I just wanna let them know that we are keeping their safety and their health in our prayers and that uh, we want, we wish the best for them. But I wanna say special thanks to Chief Menifee because um. Uh, Councilman Hoskins and myself had an opportunity to do the Fire Ops one oh one with our Oakland Fire Department. And it was amazing, and if you ever have that opportunity, you should, should do it if you haven't uh in the past. We actually get to see what firefighters do, just a little bit, uh, on a day-to-day basis, and it was just so eye-opening, all the knowledge that they have and how. Um, they do it joyfully, it was just, I mean, amazing when you, you are in, walk into certain situations like a house fire. And you can't see in front of you how they, the routines and things that they just go through on a natural, just so nat- comes so naturally to them. So um, I just wanna say thank you for that opportunity, it was, it was very eye-opening and I have a. I already respected our, our um first responders and our firefighters, but now I have a higher respect for the things that they do. Um, so again, just stay safe, continue to vote early and uh. Take care, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Miss Taylor, and you're absolutely right, kudos to our department, to our fire department, to our chief. Police officers and our chief and all of the uh emergency responders. Uh, you know, I think we don't realize sometimes how blessed we are in Southfield to have the type of team that we have out here. So uh, you're right on point with that, thank you, uh, Miss Banks?
Thank you, um, I concur with um my two colleagues and everything that they said. Um, tonight, a comment was made that notices for meetings throughout the city are not. Properly being placed on bulletin boards, um, I hope this isn't true. Um, if anyone is interested um in the various meetings that are going on throughout the city, um, in addition to the cable channel, you can also go to our website. WWW dot CityofSouthfield dot com, go to the department to check out the various meetings. But it's my understanding um that we, I know we have two, maybe it's three different areas that. We are required to post meeting notices for all meetings in the City of Southfield. And I hope we're not becoming lax and not posting those, so just wanted to comment on that. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that um, the twenty twenty household hazardous wa- waste event is coming up this Saturday. It's gonna be at the Rassok Facility located at two zero eight seven five Maple Ridge Avenue. That's like around Eight Mile and Evergreen. The hours are from nine AM to two PM, it's a great time to do your um ball cleaning. They will be accepting clothes, shoes, accessories, small household items, um electronics. Um, and also paper, you know, if you have any shredding. So it's a great time to try and clean up around your house and, and get rid of some of these items. Also, two fun things that are coming to the City of Southfield, we've got Boo at the Berg, it's gonna be this. It's gonna be this, um, October, Saturday, October 23rd and Sunday, October 24th from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. It will be at the Berg Historical Park. Um, tickets are $5 for Southfield residents and $10 if you're not a Southfield resident. Um, you can get your tickets at the Parks and Recreation Department. Also, there's going to be a book and boo event at Bedford Woods Park. Uh, this will be October 31st, um, and this will be between, um, 1:00 and 4:00 PM. Um, in closing, I'd like to say that, you know, there's a lot of unrest all over the world today. I hope, um, that you will join me in praying for world peace and unity for everyone. Um, thank you. I have nothing further to add.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Banks. Uh, can you, can you repeat the piece about the shredding opportunity? Because it kinda went out when I was listening to you.
Okay, the, um, the shredding, can you hear me?
Yes.
The shredding will be held at the RASOC facility, which is at, um, Evergreen and Eight Mile Road. Um, October 24th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And basically, um, they will be accepting all kinds of recycling, from clothes to shoes to small household appliances, um, electronics, and also paper for shredding. They'll accept up to three boxes or a total of 100 pounds. And it's a great event too.
Yeah.
Also paint. If you've got paint, glass and jars, um, aluminum, steel cans, um, batteries, they'll take everything.
That's great. Uh, it's, it's funny when you said that, uh, cause myself and, uh, City Administrator Zorn were just talking about trying to put a, uh, you know, a shred day together or something of that nature as well, uh, for the city. So, uh, we don't wanna coincide with that, but we just wanna do some more environmentally friendly things, uh, that the city will put forward. So, well, that's great that that's happening already. So, thank you very much for that information.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Brightwell?
Oh, September the 28th, and that's the most excited I've been to vote since I first became eligible years ago. I got my ballot on the 25th, which was a Friday, 9/25, September 25th, which is a Friday. And I turned it around, put it in and dropped it up at the clerk's office on that Monday, the 28th. And a few days later, I tracked it just to make sure it was in the system in miss.gov/vote is in the system. Uh, to be counted on November 3rd. So, um, I, I just said that from a standpoint that, uh, I, I voted track all my life. I had never been excited to vote this time. I, I can't ever be, I can never recall being that excited, uh, because it means so much at this point in time. Um, the other thing I wanna hitchhike on what, uh, Ms. Taylor talked about, is for the fire operations one-on-one. I attended that, uh, a couple of years ago. And it's extremely, uh, insightful and it's educational. You know, fighting fires was a science. And I learned that by being there, uh, putting out car fires, you know, handling the, uh, jaws of life, doing, going through all this stuff that firefighters go through. There, there's a science associated with that and I definitely appreciate, uh, our, uh, team of firefighters and our department of firefighters. But I appreciated everybody who was there too from, from, from all over Oakland County. They were really professional. Everybody there wanted to really help out the individuals who were there, um, uh, just walking through the paces, but they were extremely, um, uh, helpful. And they realized we were rookies and, uh, matter of fact, didn't know what we were doing. Uh, and I went home and I fell asleep. I've slept, I haven't slept that hard in years. I was so tired. But it, it, it's a, firefighting is a tough job and it's a, a job that takes skill and knowledge, uh, to, uh, to serve individuals, to save their life. Um, one other thing, um, as far as rules and procedure for council, I wanted to bring up, uh, that perhaps we could add, add an addendum to the rules and procedures. And I wanna bring Mr. Zorn in on this a little bit. Uh, when it came to my attention, but whenever, whenever we have a, a meeting and pro temp and or president's not there, wanna authorize Mrs. Zorn to, to fuck, go through, it's called the, uh, the most recent, um, council president, just for continuity purposes. So he's not, you know, wandering around just lost in his meeting. And Fred, if you wanted to touch base on that a little bit?
Uh, yes, Councilman Brightwell. Uh, due, uh, council president and the rest of council, uh, Councilman Brightwell and I discussed was, uh, simply, uh, a, a, an amendment or an addition to the rules and procedures indicating, uh, in, in the rare event that we needed to have, uh, the, the council president and/or the pro temp was unable to be there, that, uh, the procedure or the protocol that would be used for, uh, who would chair that, uh, meeting. Uh, one suggestion would be the most recent, uh, president. If he or she would, were there, they would, um, attend that meeting. And, you know, the, if council is, desires to move this item forward, um, myself, the city clerk and the, uh, city attorney could, uh, make a slight adjustment, uh, or in addition to the council rules and procedures to handle this rare event.
Well, that, that, that sounds fine to me. Um, you know, I know it, 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 number one, uh, last, last meeting was a very rare occasion. And, uh, Ms. Morris and I were both, uh, ill at the time. And, uh, we appreciate Mr. Mannerbaum for taking over that particular meeting, uh, a former president pro temp. Uh, so, uh, you know, but nonetheless, uh, you know, if we wanna make, set, set a protocol moving forward that the, that the past immediate, the immediate past president be the next person in line to, to finish a meeting. Cause I, I mean, I was there for most of it. I just, I was so, I became, I'm so ill, I couldn't finish it. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with that. So I think, uh, Ms. Taylor, if we could throw it on our legislative agenda, moving forward and, uh, bring something to council next time.
Sure. Sure.
Alright, cool. Alright, so we'll do, we'll do that.
If that's what you, if that's what you think is necessary or we could, you know, whatever the council desires.
No, the, the, the meeting we were talking about, it wasn't a regular council meeting, it was the, the president's meeting.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, it's the president's meeting. No, nobody's there. The guy, I'm not sure whether or not. But what, anyway, that, 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 that's the thing.
Okay, okay. We'll vet it through the legislative committee. Alright.
Right, just for clarification, the, our, the council procedures and guidelines does not speak to, uh, the president's meeting, uh, without going into in-depth. The last president's meeting, the council president was on the meeting a little bit later, uh, due to his hospitalization and the meeting was already over, uh, cause it was just a carryover of the consent agenda items. Uh, so once he was able to get connected to the call, the call was over. So it wasn't like no one showed up. So just for clarification, but our council rules does not speak at all to the president's meetings.
Okay.
But it would be a part of the new rules and procedure in that, that rare occasion happened. Uh,
If, if the, if the rare occasion happened, we will be speaking to the procedure of the city council meeting. Um, currently, a, a, as previously stated, unless council dev's deeper into this, the council procedures have never spoke to the president's meeting.
That's what we're gonna do. What we gonna have them speak toward the president's meeting when the, that rare occasion because the city is a 24-hour operation and something stops it, I want Mr. Zorn and whoever's asleep seek to have some guidance of what to do. Uh, because if nobody's there in the president's meeting, the city can stop, literally stop. So, but just to take, take it through legislative and, and talk about it.
That's, we'll, we'll take it through legislative. The, the other option is like, like has happened before, we just cancel the meeting and reschedule it for another day in time. I mean, it's just simple as that. I mean, you've been president before, Dan, so you know, that's, I mean, that's, you know, sometimes you gotta do that too.
Yeah, legislative will take care of it. Thank you.
Yeah, but it's sometimes, some things, some things have to be dealt with. Some things have to be dealt with.
We got it. We're gonna take care of it.
Okay.
Um, Attorney King, can we add that to our, uh, agenda?
Hi, this is Dawn. Yes.
We'll add that.
We'll add.
We, we, we got, we got a list.
She's probably off now.
Okay, you, you're cutting up, Mr. Lord, cutting off. We're good.
Back, we'll be, we'll be back with recommendations.
Okay.
Cutting out again.
No, I heard you. I heard you.
Okay.
That's good. You, you know, I'm a old, old corporate guy. I'm done. I'm done.
Alright, good deal. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Alright. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as Council, as, uh, Councilwoman Taylor, uh, mentioned, um, I was able to be a part of the, uh, the Fire Ops, uh, one-on-one. And I wanna, uh, thank, uh, Chief Menefee for extending that, um, extending that invitation to me. Um, like, uh, Councilwoman Taylor said, it was an eye-opening experience. Uh, I was really looking forward to seeing how um, our firefighters really have been handling, uh, being on duty during COVID. Um, and I got to see that up close. I got to see many of the things that we've been improving, uh, here on council in action. Um, and then of course I got to do all the cool stuff and, you know, putting out, putting out a fire, a car fire and using the, the fabled jaws of life, uh, on a car. Um, I would highly recommend it, um, using those jaws of life. For example, I mean, my arms hurt for a couple of days. Uh, they were heavy. Um, and getting into the, we took a car door off and taking the car door off took a lot of work. Um, and I can't, and you know, it was a nice, the temperature was, was perfect. It was perfect for this. But I can imagine if it was like 90 degrees, um, and you're doing that, you're trying to get somebody out of a car. Um, and it's even, and even some of the other things that we had to do, um, it's been so much, there's more hurdles, there's more things that our, our firefighters have to overcome with COVID. Um, there's more things that they have to put on to protect themselves. Um, and it really was a very eye-opening experience. I know some of my colleagues have done it before, but, uh, if you have it, um, I would highly recommend it. They will, uh, tailor it, uh, for your needs. Um, uh, they make sure they, they can, whatever you need them to do, however, uh, however you need them to do it, they will make it work for you. Um, and so I highly recommend that. Um, this, this weekend, um, I was able to be a part of an event we had here at the city, um, where we did, um, uh, COVID testing and voter registration and we did wellness stuff. Uh, we were also gonna do something with the census there, but unfortunately the, the US Supreme Court stopped, uh, the count of the census. Um, but it was a very good, uh, very good event. Uh, I bring it up just because, um, at that event, I was able to get a COVID test. Uh, also was able to get, um, a test for, uh, antibodies to see if I'd had had it at some point. And, uh, as it was mentioned before, we have, we're having a lot of, um, uh, the, the COVID rates are going up, um, throughout the country and Michigan, we're hitting record numbers. Um, yeah, I just want everybody to stay safe. Um, we won't, I don't know what's going to happen now that the governor doesn't have a lot of, uh, the powers that she had with the, with the rise of the cases. I know that there, um, just today it was announced in the legislature that the, um, um, the House Republicans are going to announce a plan tomorrow uh, for how to handle COVID going forward. I don't, I don't know what that's gonna look like. Um, but for the near future, I'm not, I'm a little nervous that we might not have a lot of the, the tools in our toolkit that we had the first time that made Michigan, that really helped Michigan, um, get our rates down. Um, so I say if you, if you can, if you can get tested, um, try to keep yourself safe, wash your hands. Um, make sure that, um, you are doing everything, especially with the holidays coming up, um, making sure you are staying, you are not doing more than you should be, out more than you should be, around people more than you should be. Um, um, and one last thing, um, we are in an election year and so we wanna make sure we are doing everything, uh, to encourage people to come out and vote. Um, Southfield's been doing very well, um, with, uh, the amount of return for our, our absentee ballots. And I know we're doing everything we can to make sure people come out and vote. Uh, one thing that I'm doing with our state representative Kyra Harris Bowden and our, our state Senator Jeremy Moss, we've been hosting, um, marches to the ballots on Sundays at noon. Um, and this is just literally another option for us to encourage people to come out and vote early so they don't have to wait. Um, they don't have to mail in their ballot or they don't have to, um, come and vote in person. Uh, we literally cheer people on as we march, we marched to a ballot box. We marched to the ballot box yesterday at City Hall and we literally cheer people on as they vote. And it's been a fun event. It's, I'm actually looking forward to it every Sunday when we've been doing it. Um, and I encourage people to come out. Uh, we're doing it every Sunday, uh, until the election. Uh, at noon, we meet at the library. Um, and come on if you can. It's a really fun event. Um, that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Last, 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 please, Mr. Mannerbaum?
Thank you. Um, it seems that everyone, uh, has pretty much said anything that I would have said.
Mr. Mannerbaum, are you there or am I breaking up again?
Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I, I think everyone has pretty much, you know, said everything I was going to say, especially about being safe uh, with the rising numbers of COVID. Um, also, one of the things the city just put out was their, uh, activity book from Parks and Rec for the winter. It's currently online. Um, so please check it out and see how they are trying to do the best with you with, um, being socially distant right now. Um, the other thing, it was, it was mentioned earlier and I know that, um, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Taylor said that she was going to bring it up in legislative committee is the, uh, what would happen if the president and pro temp are not there? Um, I think, um, I'm, I'm trying not to take it personally, uh, that all of a sudden we wanna have some types of rules around it, uh, considering I was tasked to, um, to lead the, the, the meeting as, um, our president had to step down, uh, at that time, but, or step away. Um, but I, I, I don't necessarily think, um, I obviously have my own thoughts about it. Um, you know, all of us are in a, a leadership position on the council. Um, we've all run, uh, subcommittee meetings or different meetings. And I, I think that, um, it really could be, um, up for, up for debate. Obviously it's going to be taken to legislative, but I think, I don't necessarily think that it should go to the last, um, immediate past president. What if there is none on the council? There's so many different situations. You know, it could be that, uh, just the council itself decides, uh, who's gonna lead the meeting in that rear situation. And I've been on council for almost five, for just over five years now, and that's the first time that that's ever happened. So it is very rare, but I think that it's something, if, if we wanna look at it, that's fine, but, uh, there's just so many different possibilities that could happen. I think creating some type of rule around it would get very tricky, uh, unless we had the current council members that were there, maybe vote on someone to lead that particular meeting. Uh, that's by two cents. Obviously, I'll leave it up to the legislative committee to bring something back for further discussion. Uh, and other than that, everyone, please, um, be safe. Uh, thank you very much.
Mr. Manabom, I just, a few words about the Shiva event yesterday.
I'm not sure who's talking, but I can't hear anything.
You're, you're fading in and out, Mr. President.
Can you talk to?
You're fading in and out. You can't hear you.
I don't know. I keep getting muted. I'm sorry. Okay. Can you all hear me? I was asking Mr. Manabom, um, if he could.
I, I, I think I have figured out what you, what you're, what you asked, but, yeah, so, um, as, as many people are aware, yes, Mr. President, I'll, I, I can talk about it.
No one can hear me right now.
Barely. The, last night, the Shiva Bethiuda had a, uh, a virtual dinner that was actually viewed by over half a million people worldwide. Uh, it was an hour long and had, um, many speakers, including, uh, the current president, uh, as well as, uh, President Trump, as well as, uh, President, Vice President, uh, Biden, uh, as well as many other dignitaries, uh, Governor Whitmer, Senator Peter, Senator Stabenow. Um, and it, it was a testament to, uh, the local school that is actually in our, uh, neighborhood, that, uh, it's ever expanding. But it was a very nice event. Um, I know that I'll, usually all the, um, council members, the mayor, clerk, uh, try to attend the dinner in person. Hopefully, that will happen next year, but, um, it was a very nice, uh, event. And hopefully next year, we can all be there in person. Um, but I know that they're always very thankful for the leadership that we have in the city, that helps them continue building and continue growing and, um, helping the, all the children as well as the community members learn and grow. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, uh, Mr. Manabom. And it was, it was a very good, uh, hour of peace. And, uh, that kinda leads me into, um, what I also want to mention. And, uh, Fred, if you could help me out with this on the date, but, um, just letting the residents know that, uh, as of last couple of weeks, we have, as a city, installed three peace poles throughout the city. And we plan to have a dedication November sixth at noon. Is that right, Mrs. Zorn?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. And, uh, so it will be, it will be a brief ceremony, uh, but it's just a dedication. It's a recognition of peace, uh, throughout our community as well as for the world and as a whole. And so we would like as many residents and, and otherwise to be there. And, uh, there will be more, more information forthcoming, uh, of the details. But if you can keep November sixth, twelve noon, City Hall on your calendars, and we will hope to see as many people as possible out on that particular day to dedicate that particular peace pole. Uh, I think there's one in the Red Pole District, and then there's gonna be one by the library. And, uh, what the peace poles say is let, you know, may peace prevail. And, uh, it's in various languages. And so it's in English, Spanish, Russian, Armenian. I can't, I mean, I, I can go through the list of them, but all three poles have four different languages on there. So we have twelve different ones. Of course, we can't, we couldn't put every language we could think of to, to get everybody, but the message is clear. It's about letting peace prevail. Um, and that's what we, we like to think as our city is one that is about peace. So, um, I just put that in everyone's ear on this evening. And, uh, at our next meeting, I'll have, uh, more detailed information for, uh, the November sixth event. So, uh, all right. So thank you, council, for everything that you have, uh, contributed this evening. Um, so we'll, I think I got everybody. So I think we'll now move on to, uh, our mayor, Mr. Dr. Cyver.
Evening once again. Um, just make a quick comment on the, uh, Bell Road Roundabout. Uh, I was approached by, uh, the residents of, um, uh, Riverbank Neighborhood, and they asked, couldn't the city do something to improve the appearance of the roundabout? And, uh, at the same time, the Southfield Public Art Commission, uh, was engaging Hubert Massey. Uh, he was introduced to you in May when, um, the, uh, public art plan for twenty twenty-one was presented to council. Originally, uh, there was another allocation for Mr. Ma-, uh, or Dr. Massey's, uh, proposed project. He's actually been commissioned for two projects in this, in the city. And so, um, uh, well-intended, we said, okay, well, then perhaps, uh, Dr. Massey's, um, creation could go on, um, on Bell Road in that roundabout. There are a number of people who are interested in seeing it there. Contact was made with the neighborhood association leaders because Dr. Massey doesn't create anything without neighborhood input. And, um, quite honestly, I was taken aback at the amount of, uh, negative, um, comments that came from the Twickenham neighborhood. Um, this is not a done deal. Uh, uh, we did hold a, um, uh, we sent a, uh, a brochure to all the residents, actually, but almost a thousand residents were notified. Uh, we did hold a meet the author event last Thursday night at Sherazetik. Uh, this was an opportunity for people to meet Hubert Massey, also find out what, uh, is proposed as well as what he's capable of. And, um, unfortunately, the, um, uh, weather was terrible. Uh, this was outside the social distancing and mask. Uh, we had a, a small, uh, attendance, but, um, uh, no decision, uh, has been made. But this really is about, uh, you know, despite the fact that, uh, a number of people on Facebook, uh, were opposed to this, thinking that it would be a traffic distraction for one, uh, which our art on the Evergreen Road roundabouts are not. Plus, when you approach a roundabout, you look to the right, you don't look straight ahead. Someone else suggested that, um, it was gonna become a tourist attraction and that, um, there'd be lots of unwanted cars coming on Bell Road. And, uh, then, um, a number of other comments. Any, anyhow, um, uh, this is still on the exploratory stage. Uh, unfortunately, the president of Riverbank Neighborhood, uh, who conveyed, uh, her association's wishes, uh, was not able to attend last Thursday as, uh, she was out of town due to a death in her family. Anyhow, I'll let that rest for now, but I wanted to, um, update the council on that. I, I really wanna talk this evening about, um, where we are in Southfield with, uh, COVID nineteen. We were doing very, very well. Matter of fact, we were having, um, uh, uh, after the Fourth of July, uh, things sort of calmed down. Um, we continued to see new cases, but, um, it would be a handful, uh, each week, and certainly the number of deaths had declined. We've had a terrible two weeks in Michigan with, um, over nineteen thousand new cases in the last two weeks and two hundred and fifteen deaths. In Southfield, in the last two weeks, we have had seventy-eight new cases. This is one of the largest increases since last spring. Our fire chiefs, um, and Councilwoman, um, Taylor said it, uh, we believe this is the second wave. We cannot, um, let our guard down. We not, we must continue to be, um, uh, vigilant. As, uh, this virus has not gone away, and it doesn't seem to any of us that it's going away any, anytime soon. So, um, thankfully, uh, the number of deaths in the city remains pretty steady since March at two hundred and forty-seven. But seventy-eight new cases in the last two weeks, um, is a great concern, uh, to all of us. And I think it's, um, ironic, uh, maybe that's not the right word, but, uh, maybe shameful is the right word, that there are the attacks on safety, uh, at a time where we're seeing, uh, an increase in case, in cases, not just in Southfield, but across Michigan. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Cyver, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate that. And that is, those are some troubling statistics that you have presented for us. So again, the one, we, we continue to urge everyone to keep their masks on if they're out in public. If you don't have to go out, don't go out. Again, with me just coming off the heels of having pneumonia, I can only imagine what this COVID is doing to people. Uh, so I, I would just urge you, this is not something we wanna play with. It's not a game. And, uh, that goes right around back, circle back around to our voting for this year. Uh, keep in mind, uh, that leadership means a lot, and we need to, we need the right leadership in the right positions so that, uh, things are working out that are gonna help the communities as a whole and, uh, not just self-centered or whatnot. So, uh, just some more commentary, but nonetheless, uh, we appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you. We'll move now to the administration. Mr. Zorn, you have two items.
Hey, uh, Mr. Clip, Mr. Lord, yeah, Mr. Cruz. Let me, let me make a, if I can, I wanna make a clarification about what I was talking about, a meeting. I wasn't talking, I'm talking about the president's meeting where only the, the president and the president of pro temp are present, not the whole meeting. That the whole meeting is open to anybody who's there. And I think, uh, I didn't even volunteer to chair, so. But what I'm talking about is the board, when the president and the pro temp are not present, at the president's meeting, that slows down the operation of the city. And that's why, uh, it just came to my attention. That's why I mentioned I would try to bring this up. I'll try to get it resolved, but it has nothing to do with our regular meeting where we got five or six other council members around. That is, you know, a group thing, and, and the group can take care of that however they want to. But I'm just talking about the meeting that the president and the pro temp are the only council members there to give Fred guidance. And just from an organization standpoint, that, we, we need to discuss to make sure that the rules, so Fred knows what to do, uh, in the event something is going on. That's all it was. Not, or, they had, they had none to give you already. They had none to give you.
Understood. Okay. We, we got you on that.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, most, most times, we're following just that we would cancel the meeting and, and, uh, wait till at least one or the other could be there to give that guidance. Um, again, it was a unique, a unique set of circumstances. And so, uh, but, uh, it's no problem. Like I said, we'll take it up at legislative, and, uh, we'll just give a recommendation and we'll see where council goes from there.
No, no, that's probably, I just wanna make sure I didn't, nobody thought I was trying to open up a hornet's nest for my own purposes. You know, I don't, I didn't know.
No, not at all.
Yeah, okay. Okay then. All right then. All right.
We know you, we, we know you like rules, so.
That's true.
Get some rules.
I grew up, I grew up with rules. All right.
All right.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Okay then.
All right. Administration, Mrs. Zorn, you got two meet, two items?
Uh, y- y- yes, uh, Mr. President. The first item we briefly discussed at the October, sixth, uh, council meeting, um, I'm sorry, yes, at the October sixth. And, and the statement was that we had out to bid, um, some improvements to the library's heating and ventilation air conditioning system. In your packet this evening, you have the, uh, results of that bid. We were going to present it at the October thirteenth meeting and request a, a rule ten. Uh, this evening, I am requesting authorization to, um, award the, uh, bid to Temperature Services for a remanufactured unit that comes with the same warranty of a new unit. Temperature Services has successfully, uh, completed many projects for the city. Uh, we're requesting to award a contract, um, with, uh, service, Temperature Services of Livonia in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for HVAC repairs in the library. The, um, scope of work includes, um, re- replacing, um, uh, two, two compressors in, in the library, a- as well as improving the overall of intake and circulation of air in that building. Uh, so I, I am asking for council authorization to award the contract to, uh, Temperature Services.
You need a rule ten on this evening?
Uh, tonight, we don't need rule tens, uh, the way the agenda was posted as.
Oh, that's right.
It earlier.
We can just do it. We can just take the votes. Okay. So you're asking for the vote for this, to take, take place this evening. Okay. Very good. Let's see what council has to say. Mr. Manabom?
Thank you. Um, I just, I had a question just on the tabulations. They all say alternate bid except the last one. What, can you explain the alternate bid?
The, the alternate bid was for the reconditioned compressors. And what we have with this is the same, uh, warranty as new ones. There, you know, we've gone through this with, uh, purchasing and the, um, what is proposed is the same as buying new. And for the price difference, we are recommending, um, that we take the alternate, uh, bid.
Got it. Okay. It makes sense. I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. Yep. Ms. Morse?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I, I will comply with your request, um, City Administrator Zorn. But I do want to circle back to Council President's comments. Uh, I, I think this is the third, uh, vendor tonight based in Livonia, uh, that we will be awarding a contract to. And I really want to, um, have some conversations around our minority vendor participation. I, I, I don't see how we can't have a provider in Southfield to, to do this type of work. So, um, I just, those are my comments for this evening. And I, and Council President, if it be your pleasure, I just, at some point, I'd like to see how we can discuss, um, standing up some kind of, um, training. um standing up some kind of um training or program or something. It just, it has, we have to find a way to be able to diversify uh our contractors that we use. Those are my comments for this evening.
Totally agree. I say uh next, next council president's meeting, let's put it on there. Let's, let's start that conversation.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Taylor?
Um thank you. Uh yes, I have no problem with so going forward with what Fred Zorn is presenting. And I agree with both you and Councilwoman um Morris's saying uh about the minority vendors too. So I, I'd like to see us move that forward as, as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Uh Ms. Banks?
Um I have no questions. Um I approve this request. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh Mr. Brightwell?
Uh no questions. I approve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
Uh no questions for me. Uh I'm, I'm good to go with this as well.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion there.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid um as recommended by the city administrator for the HVAC for the library.
Support, Councilwoman Banks?
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Banks, that we accept the receipt of bids for the heating and ventilation and air cooling repairs for the Southfield Public Library. Are there any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please draw the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Solution adopted for the receipt of bid for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning repairs in the library.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Mrs. Zorn, item B?
Uh yes, uh Mr. President. Just a, a few brief remarks about the Northland uh project. Um I believe we previously reported that the city did close on the sale of a five-acre parcel to Providence Ascension Healthcare. Uh that is a five-acre piece of property uh just southeast of the uh Providence Drive and fronting on J.L. Hudson Drive. Uh we've also have executed the purchase agreement with contours. Uh we've uh received the required uh down payment as, as well as earnest fees of a hundred and fifty thousand. And uh the total amount uh put down was a half million dollars. Um I just wanna, tonight, council took the action on uh to schedule the public hearing for November sixteenth uh to consider the creation of a, a two-ten district, uh District Number Four pursuant to Public Act uh two-ten. Planning Commission is uh moving forward on the preliminary review of the uh site plan. Staff is in uh negotiations with uh regarding the uh Brownfield incentives. And we've, are laying the foundation to engage the state of Michigan in different conversations pertaining to uh tax increment, uh Brownfield tax increment capture on the site. So the project is moving along. And like, you know, as we go through this project, some of the numbers, you're talking uh two-hundred-and-eighty-five-million-dollar uh plus investment. Some of the Brownfield numbers, because you're building out so much infrastructure as you have a site pursuant to state Brownfield um legislation, you have a site that's eligible uh and it helps build out that infrastructure. In some ways, you are building out a small community uh within uh the city. You know, and I need people to think of some of our larger Brownfield plans. It's, you know, we forget as a community that Southfield undertook uh one of the repositionings of an earlier mall, the Tel, the Tel Twelve Mall, and that uh mall was repositioned using Brownfield incentives. And the city partnered in a public-private partnership. The Lear deal is still a, a well-recognized uh Brownfield project. Um a broad, a Brownfield project that's similar in some ways, obviously not in size and scope, was the Spring Haven uh residential uh retail development at uh Webster and Southfield, a former mobile home park. And then the Twelve Mile and Southfield Road, and more recent Brownfield projects where we use incentives uh to make a very large statement. And I'm pleased, I'm, I'm so impressed and pleased to be part of a team that is working towards, you know, this vision document that is, as it had been said earlier tonight, will be what Northland was in its inception, something that turns heads and gets people to rethink uh how we use our land in um in southeastern Michigan. So I wanted you to provide you with that update. Um just a few other notes. On Wednesday, we will be on our bo-, uh we will begin some of our preliminary review as we go out to sell bonds for the uh, the third installment of our street project. And I can assure you the Northland project will come up. Uh the fact that we've managed to compensate, uh you know, put a, a, this hundred-plus acres under contract and make the city whole on its twenty-point-seven-million-dollar investment. You're slightly ahead as this deal uh transacts uh on that. I think council should be very pleased. But I, what I want to say about the uh, the bond is the last three times we've gone out for bonds, we've heard various statements about the city needs to increase the education attainment level of our residents. And we're very fortunate that we have a high level, but we need to move that level a, a, a little higher. And as we move that higher, we think about terms of, in, in economic development, about creating a stronger sense of place, a stronger sense of community, greater vib- vibrancy. And we're hearing that our millennials and people are making decisions, are making those where am I gonna live decisions based on that sense of place. And our vision document for Northland is all about a sense of place. The Michigan Roundtable and the state of Michigan is embarked on a goal to raise our education attainment level um to where our, our residents, uh by twenty-thirty, sixty percent of our residents have a associate's, bachelor's, higher uh education degree or some type of certification. Um that we raise that standard. And as a community, those things that are in our control, well, how can we create that greater sense of place and vibrancy? So we're gonna continue this Northland uh project. Its size and scope dwarfs the projects I mentioned earlier. Uh Tel Twelve, Lear, Spring Haven, Twelve Mile, Southfield. Uh this is all of those projects on steroids. And it's an exciting time uh for Southfield, exciting time for Oakland County as well as southeastern Michigan. I do want to uh conclude my remarks regarding COVID. So much has been said earlier. The administration is very much concerned uh regarding the impact of, of COVID. We continue our, our management team calls on both Monday and Thursdays. If necessary, we're prepared to go back to a daily call. We monitor what's happening in the country, in, in the state, and more importantly, what's happening in our community. Um I, regarding the library, the library is open for drive-through only. Again, the library's open for drive-through only. And I want to be really clear, there was a lot of remarks regarding the number of people in, in the library impacted by COVID. Uh we know that we recently had one positive. We know that we lost uh early on in the COVID crisis, a re- uh, a part-time, non-career librarian uh who had been out of the country recently, that uh she passed away and maybe worked less four, eight hours a, a week. And there was some discussion about a second person who was last in our employee in December of nineteen, pre-COVID. So you know, the message to, to uh the community is, you know, as a matter of fact, the library has not been open to the general public, the full library. The first floor, uh the conf, the, the conference room and the lobby had been open to the public. Everything else has been through the drive-through. We are no longer gonna be opening that first floor. We are gonna be taking things only through the drive-through. I am challenging the library staff to figure out with our existing personnel how we can increase the hours of the drive-through. And we hope to come back to council uh with uh some additional information. We are continuing to, by every department, monitor the impact um on their ability to function. You'll recall early on in the crisis, we had split our Department of Public Works in half. Uh we, if necessary, were prepared to do that. Our fire department on all runs is wearing full gear. They're back to what they were doing in March and April. Um so we, we will continue to monitor uh thi- this situ- situation. And uh as many of you have said, the most important things we can do is mask up, wash our hands frequently, uh continue to be, you know, social distance. Um and it's already been mentioned about the Household Hazardous Waste and Tread Day. That is nine to two. Um I can tell you, if you look at how that event typically goes, the first couple hours is really busy. We had, unfortunately, Rossok had to cancel all of their spring events due to COVID. Uh most recently, we had an event uh in Novi, uh and that was on October third. From a five-hour period, over two thousand people came through. Uh we can run a good-sized volume, uh but if, I'm encouraging people, let that, the volume starts early. You know, if you showed up a couple hours, you may not have uh a, a large weight, weight. Uh that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Zorn, thank you for those updates. Uh I think that was very helpful for us. Continue to have the direction of where we're headed. Somebody's got their, somebody muted themselves. Um for us to keep in my, you know, know what uh administration is working on and what direction we're going in, uh that we're all in one accord. And uh I commend you on the work that you've been doing because these are some very difficult times that we're working through. So uh thank you for your leadership, your senior staff, and all those um working with them. Uh I think we, I think we as a city have been doing a very excellent job. Uh no, no due to us so much as council people in my mind, uh more so to those that are right there and at the ground floor seeing the people and, and uh making things happen. So thank you for that. Um I don't know if anybody had any, anybody wanted to comment, counsel on, on uh Mr. Zorn's comments at all. Uh if you do, you can speak up now or else we'll move forward. Okay, we'll take your silence as a fir- affirmation of uh the work that's being done. Um Madam Attorney?
Good evening.
This evening?
Um nothing further to add. Just have a good night.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Just a few things uh this evening I wanted to touch on. First of all, all eight of our city uh Southfield ballot drop boxes have been installed. So uh the following locations are there, are in the front of our city hall circle, our Southfield Library Drive up, uh Southfield Fire Station Two, which is located at two-five-seven-five-three West Nine Mile, Southfield Fire Station Number Three, which is located at two-five-one-two-zero West Twelve Mile, Southfield Fire Station Number Five, two-four-four-seven-seven Losser Road, Berg Historical Park, uh that's two-nine-three-six-zero, Civic Drive, uh Southfield A&amp;T, uh two-six-seven-four-five Losser, and Chano School, sixteen-five-hundred Lincoln. Uh there is a map uh that will be posted on the website uh in first thing in AM. And then we'll also have an interactive map that'll be posted um in a couple, probably by the end of business tomorrow. Um as everyone has spoke, that, you know, voting is an expression of our commitment to ourselves and to our community. Currently, Southfield is leading Oakland County in absentee ballot requests um and returned absentee ballots. So currently, we have mailed out thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-six absentee ballots. And we have returned eighteen thousand four-hundred-and-six absentee ballots. I would just challenge my colleagues to continue, to encourage people to um vote by mail. Uh or our office is available uh to vote uh every day in person until uh November second. We're open uh every day, eight AM to uh five PM. We have a late night this evening. Uh not this evening, but on Thursday evening, we'll be open to seven PM. That date is Thursday, October the twenty-second. And then we will be open on Halloween from seven AM to three PM. Uh so uh we are doing excellent and our commitment uh to voting, currently, half of our population has requested absentee ballots. And um to uh earlier comment by Councilwoman Banks, we post all of the notifications in the appropriate uh areas. Um also, before the governor's uh executive orders were struck down, it was in the emergency uh public notification website um that uh all of the notices were published. I would have to double-check to see. Uh since those uh her orders were uh struck down, is that still in effect or does the legislation have to act on that as well? That was simply a vehicle for all the communities to post their various uh public notices um in one central location on the internet. Because although they are posted in buildings because of the COVID crisis, many people were not attending uh or coming into uh the uh businesses. So that is um all I have uh this evening. Thank you.
But thank you, Madam Clerk. So if I bring my ballot in on Halloween, I'll get a Snicker bar or something like that.
No.
Yeah, I, I voted two months ago, but that's all right. Very good. Thank you for the update. Uh Mr. Treasure, Lowenberg, are you available?
Yes, I, I'm here. Um Mr. President and Council, I just wanted to uh reiterate again what uh Mr. Zorn, the city administrator, mentioned earlier about Northland. Uh definitely, it's uh, it's great to hear about the contract uh and the, the future development that's gonna be happening over there. It's gonna be a great shot in the arm for our tax base. Uh so we've been waiting a long time for it, but hopefully uh we'll see the fruits of the labor. So thank you to everyone involved with that. Uh we have the bond rating coming up uh shortly uh with Standard and Poor's. And one of the things that uh Mr. Zorn had mentioned was the adminis-, uh was education is important uh for our community. And so uh one, one of the things that, I don't know if many people have heard about it, but there was a program that the governor, Governor Whitmer, had mentioned a few weeks ago um as an incentive for all the people that were essential employees, first responders, is free college education. Uh they teamed up and um with some, um some colleges to be able to offer free education for those people who put their lives on the line and uh who, who've done heroes' work for, for our state. And so this is a little bit of a, of an show of token of appreciation. So we hope that uh everyone takes advantage of that, that's able to uh includes our city employees as well who uh, who came in tirelessly throughout the entire COVID situation. And uh so uh please, uh if you, if you know anyone that can qualify, that could take advantage of this, please uh get the word out to them. And uh also, uh was mentioned earlier about the Yeshiva Bet Yehuda Dinner, uh it was a virtual dinner. It was unbelievable in terms of uh the broader array. The, the theme was Night of Unity. And especially in these times, uh unity is very, very important. And uh Southfield is a great example of the unity, and uh we hope that that message spreads throughout the entire world. So um again, also repeating what uh members of council have mentioned and, and our clerk, but uh keep safe and make sure, please vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenberg. And I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Lowenberg. And I appreciate you pulling back around, because I did want to circle back around to what Mr. Zorn was saying about education. Um, this past, last week, I was on two calls, uh, one with the county exec, excuse me, and one with my chancellor at OCC. And both of them, excuse me, both of them were talking about, um, it, that they have a initiative moving forward to try to make sure that at least eighty percent of the people in Oakland County have some type of terminal degree or, um, degree, some type of training certificate to, uh, go into a, uh, a field of something like, uh, you know, I mean, it could be police fire. It could also be carpentry, plumbing, just that and the other. Um, but that is an initiative of the county. It's a county-wide initiative. And so since we, we, we brought it up today, I am going to reach out to Mr., uh, County Executive Culture and see if he will pop in on one of our meetings and just talk to us a little bit more about how that initiative is working. Um, but that, that is one of the goals of the county right now and, uh, should be one of ours in alignment with that, that, um, we can get as many people in our county, uh, educated, trained, whatever it is, whatever they want to do. Um, be prepared to go out into society and start to make more things happen and, uh, be successful and, and move forward. So, um, I'm glad you guys brought that up because, uh, those, those are some really strong conversations that we had on that. All right, uh, Mr. Crowe, are you still on with us? Is anything from the planning department? Anything from the assessor or engineer? Okay. All right, moving forward. And I apologize, I, I had to switch off and get on my phone now, so trying to think. Is there anything else that we need to cover here? I think we're all set for the evening. Madam Clerk, anything else I need to touch on before we?
We're all set, sir.
We are all set. All right. I just want, I'm, again, I want to thank my colleagues, all my council people. Uh, I want to thank our mayor, our city administrator and all the city employees and all the residents that are tuned in tonight, uh, that continue to stay engaged and, uh, you know, voicing their opinions and ideas. They help make this city even a better city than it already is. Uh, let's keep at it, guys. You know, we had, we got, you know, we've been going through some tough times this year, but you know, a lot of good things have happened and, and still of everything that's going on around us. So, um, I think we've been on long enough now this evening. So again, one more thank you for everyone and the meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.